More than just one time, how about since the meeting started?
Well, we have the road parade on Saturday night.
I'd like to call to order the work session for December the 16th. Our first order of business is some service awards and we'll call forward first Ricky Riles from our Parks and Recreation Department who is celebrating 10 years with the city of Clearwater. (applause) And from our Planning and Development Department, 10 years, Ellen Crandall.[79.11][79.11](applause) Parks are out, I mean, Planning out did Parks and Rec today.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ellen, thanks for holding your mark. But I have a feeling gas is going to even surpass that with Spiro Menosis who's spending 15, has spent 15 years with the city of Clearwater. Spiro, oh sure, he's not here.[132.44][132.44](laughter) Accepting in his place? No, nobody, okay.
There's gas people here.
Okay. Oh, well, I was reading the wrong script. Spiro's not supposed to be here.[146.69][146.69](laughter) All right, so we got 35 years from Roberta Gluski from our Engineering. (applause)
We don't have many of these, do we? Roberta Gluski began her career with the city of Clearwater on December the 3rd, 1984, in the Detective Bureau at the Police Department. She was promoted several times to various departments throughout her career with the city. She is currently a Development Review Specialist in the Geographic Technology Section within the Engineering Department. Roberta demonstrates her dedication to the city by serving on the Pension Advisory Election Committee, the Achievement Awards Committee, and the Health Penitents Committee. Roberta has been an extremely valuable employee. Her professional manner and assistance to the public, her attention to detail, and her knowledge in site plan review and the building permitting process make Roberta an outstanding asset to the Engineering Department and the city of Clearwater. She always has a smile and projects a positive attitude with energy and enthusiasm. She is always willing to assist her coworkers whenever she can with various types of permitting questions. Roberta takes pride in guiding customers through the permit process to ensure that they get to the right people and have a successful experience with the city. We are proud of Roberta's accomplishments of attaining 35 years of employment with the city of Clearwater and congratulate her in reaching this wonderful milestone in her career. Thank you, Roberta, for the many years of outstanding service to the city of Clearwater.[268.33][268.33](applause)
Thank you so much. Everybody stay in floor.[271.33][271.33](applause) Now I know why Spiro didn't show up today.[282.13][282.13](laughter) Our Employee of the Month Award for November 2019 goes to Ricky Riles from Parks and Recreation.[325.12][325.12](applause)
Ricky Riles successfully managed the implementation of a $30,000 upgrade to new RecTrack software. This software is the backbone of Parks and Recreation's Athletics and Recreation Programming Division. It is used for ball field permits, tennis court registrations, and to schedule field maintenance. In our recreation centers, it tracks registration for classes, number and locations of user visits, and is used to pay instructors for a number of registrants per class. Upgrading the system to a web-based platform, the new version, introduced many efficiencies, increased accessibility, and new features for our city residents, such attributes as browsing programs and classes at other facilities. With over 100 city employee users across six recreation centers and thousands of resident end-users about to transition to a new web-based, a new web-based system, the implementation had to be carefully timed and choreographed. Coordinating closely with IT as well as countless Parks and Recreation employees, Ricky oversaw a nearly seamless upgrade. This included scheduling an entire week of trainings for the software manufacturer to cover all of the employees that use the system. Ricky had the excellent idea to record video of the trainings so that future new employees will have access to their original material and not anecdotal pass-down information. All of this required working many extra hours in addition to his regular duties, all while his team was short-staffed. For showing extraordinary dedication and patience, for providing unfailing support and responsiveness to his fellow employees, and for being an exemplary city employee, Ricky deserves to be Employee of the Month for November. Ricky Riles.[449.22][449.22](applause)
Ricky again. Thank you for all the work.
Thank you so much.
Our December Employee of the Month goes to Kelly Calhoun from our IT Department. Kelly's not here, okay? And then we move on to our bimonthly Team Award for November/December, the Good Deed Team, Matthew Henderson and Robert White. Okay. With that, we will recess our work session and go to our Pension Trustees for December the 16th. Are there any addition or corrections to the minutes of October the 14th?
Move approval of the minutes as submitted?
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of October the 14th. All in favor say aye. Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously. Anybody from the public wishing to speak to an item not on the agenda of the Pension Trustees? So please come forward at this time. If not, we will move on to Agenda Item 4.1. Ms. Poirier.
Good morning. Motion to approve the new highest acceptance into the pension plan as listed.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 4.1? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.1? Motion?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.1?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.1. Comments, council? All in favor say aye. Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 4.2.
Approve the following request of employees to vest their pensions as provided by Section 2.419 of the Employees Pension Plan.
Any, any questions of staff on 4.2? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.2? Motion?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.2?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.2. Comments, council? All in favor say aye. Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 4.3.
Approve the following request of employees for a regular pension as provided by Section 2.416 and 2.424 of the Employees Pension Plan.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 4.3? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.3?
Move to approve Agenda Item 4.3?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.3. Comments, council? All in favor say aye. Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 4.4.
I would like to introduce Jay Ravens, the Finance Director for this item.
Good morning, trustees. Jay Ravens, Finance Director. This item is a request to approve a revised investment policy for the plan's pension investments. The investment policy was last updated in June of 2016. With the assistance of the plan's Investment Consultant and a review by the Pension Attorney, the committee has completed the review and is submitting the revised policy for your approval. Changes to the policy included moving the Roles and Responsibilities section from the latter half of the policy to the front of the policy to emphasize this section. Also, additional roles and responsibilities were added for both the Investment Committee and the Investment Consultant. Some relatively minor changes were made to the Unauthorized Investments section to clarify responsibilities of the trustees versus the Investment Committee. The policy's reference to the 7% assumed rate of return was modified to be whatever the current actuarial assumption is. Names of aggregate bond and real estate indexes were updated for current names. And finally, new language was added for performance measurement of alternative investments, such as our infrastructure investments, to recognize the non-traditional nature of alternatives. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 4.4? Mr. Ravens, clarify for us the reference to the 7% expected rate of return modified to the actuarial investment. What does that actually mean?
As you, as you recall, we've had a 7% assumed rate of return for some time. We had that hardcoded in the policy to be the 7% assumed rate of return. Now that we're lowering our rate of return, currently it's 6.75%, we're going to be lowering it to 6.5. We've just made the policy flexible so it doesn't have to be updated every time we change our assumed rate of return.
And it doesn't, it doesn't affect how much money we have in the pension fund and...
No, other than it will affect the actuarial study and the required contribution that the city provides. That's all based on the assumed rate of return that you've already approved previously.
And update us again, just so that everybody's not questioning what, you know, are we fully funded, 50% funded in the pension funds?
Per the most recent actuarial assumption, we were 104% funded. We're currently having another actuarial assumption, or actuarial study done as of September 30th, 2019, so we'll see what, where that leaves us. As we lower the assumed rate of return, it's expected we may dip below 100%, but hopefully we can get back above, above 100% as everything's dependent on the investment markets and the returns that we receive.
And most pension funds in Florida are funded at 100%?
I wouldn't say most, no.
Okay. Half?
I wouldn't speculate, but, but we're in a very good position relative to other plans.
Okay, that, that's what I want, you know, wanted to just reassure ourselves that we're in a good position.
Absolutely.
Yep, very good. Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.4?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.4?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.4. Comments, council? All in favor say aye. Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Poirier, do you have any other business for the Pension Trustees?
I do not. Thank you.
Any other comments, council? We will adjourn the Pension Trustees' meeting and reconvene the City Council Work Session for December the 16th. Agenda Item 3.1, Mr. Horn.
Thank you, Mayor. amend the Clearwater Code of Ordinances, Chapter 25, Public Transportation Carriers, Article 1, Public Conveyances, to define commercial megacycles and definitions to establish standards for commercial megacycles, to require a license for commercial megacycles to be operated in the city, and to add penalties and pass the appropriate ordinance on first reading. Mr. Halios.
Good morning, Council. Jim Halios, Assistant to the City Manager. The item that we have for you today is an amendment to the ordinance for megacycles. As council recalls, the work session, or pardon me, at the council meeting on December 5th, we brought an item before you and council provided us direction to modify the item and come back to permit megacycles operating on North and South Beach. There are maps attached to this agenda item. As we have drawn them out, the overall goal, as I work with Matt Smith, was to maintain these vehicles in primarily commercial thoroughfares and keep them off of residential streets because they're going to be a primarily commercial enterprise and utilized in that way. And I'd be happy to answer any questions should you have.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 3.1? Mr. Hamilton.
I noticed on the, the South Beach, you are allowing the megacycle to come, you know, traverse Beach Walk, but no further north than Second Street. Is there, I was wondering what the thought process was there rather than allowing it to traverse all the way to the north end of Beach Walk and therefore be engaged in the traffic light and being able to use the traffic light for the right turn, to stay on the south end of the beach, not to traverse any further north, but to at least have the traffic light to help them make the right turn or, or whatever traverse.
We can look at changing that. My concern and staff's concern was that allowing it to be in that area may result in them taking the left turn and heading into the roundabout area just by giving them, giving the operator the ability to go in that area. Can we restrict if they take a left or a right? I mean, again, that...
If we don't allow the operator to make that left turn and they make that left turn, they're going to get in trouble and they might not be able to have their business any longer, is the way I look at that. So we, they'll know they're not allowed to make that left turn. That would be my, that would be my understanding. I don't know what the council is, so.
I, I think the sooner you get them off of Gulfview, the better, because that's where the congestion comes up, comes in. You also have people who are coming out of the parking lot who make left-hand turns that aren't supposed to be making, you know, left-hand turns from the Pier 60 parking lot. So I, I, I agree that staff ought to, with the staff recommendation on that.
I mean, I don't see them going anywhere north of Second Street then. I don't, you know, because you're not going to make the left hand, you're not going to make a left-hand turn on the Coronado, I don't believe, off of Second Street with it because they're, you know, once they hit the north end of where they're allowed to go, they'll start traversing south, so.
Yeah, I was also going to question why they're on Hamden, because Hamden is basically, you know, residential and a few hotel parking lots, so I don't even know why we're letting them go onto Hamden.
Mayor, the goal also to, and we can look to adjust that, but the goal to have them on Hamden is to alleviate that, the congestion of having them restricted to those two areas. So, but again, it is residential area, so we, we could look at having that eliminated and restricted to just South Gulfview Boulevard to Coronado as well.
And for that matter also, you know, the South, the South Loop on Gulfview, all of that are the Clearwater Point condominiums, there's no commercial space.
And the thought would be, the reason why that was left in there, should there be development on the old Leverox property over there to see if there, you know, I don't know, again, for future use, we could always go back and look to amend that, but that's why that was included, just to, to be able to have that ability should one need.
But this is going to be a six-month trial, and I doubt anything's going to open up in Leverox in six months.
But Mayor and Council, you all are driving this, this route, so Thursday night, you just need to agree on where you want it to go. It's difficult for us to try and advocate for something we didn't advocate to begin with, so if you all have some, some strong views about it, then, you know, if you all would kind of work that out today and Thursday, that'd be helpful, so you can vote on it.
So, do y'all want to keep the, the Clearwater Point?
No, I think, you know, like I said, this is a six-month trial to start with. I don't think there's anything coming up on the Leverox property in the next six months, so there's no need to go south, technically east, of where the Sankey Bridge comes over. As far as Hamden, the same argument that we're using here on the south end, even though there's new developments happening on Hamden, that front on Hamden in the next six months, I don't know that they're going to be to the point that there might be an opportunity on Hamden as well, so, you know, maybe Hamden isn't necessary at the present time, but it can always be added if the six-month is, trial is a success.
I don't see Hamden as being a problematic street because it's not used as much.
That's what I'm trying to do.
But I know that Jimmy's, you know, you were talking about not allowing them to turn left. That connection point to Hamden and Coronado up by Jimmy's, probably they would go there, especially with the new hotel and everything, so I see that as a, I'd like to see that kept in there.
I mean, Hamden, Hamden has a lot of commercial property on it, not necessarily. I would say, I have no problem leaving the Hamden Street as a possibility, but take away that south end that goes around Clearwater Point.
And I would be okay with that.
Yep.
Council, let me ask this question. As y'all know, I'm, I'm not going to be supporting this at all, but I still have a very serious problem, and I think y'all are dismissing the impact this is going to have on traffic and the congestion. Should we consider limiting the hours of operation? Had y'all given any thought to that? Because granted, at night, the congestion of the traffic isn't as great as in the early afternoon or late afternoon, but if we're going to go down this road, even on a trial basis, I think we need to give some consideration to limiting the hours that...
I'm, I'm kind of of the, I'm looking at it from the total 180-degree difference there. It's a six-month trial. By not limiting the hours of operation, we'll get, we'll get a better feel as to exactly what the impact it's having on, if it is having an impact on traffic. I don't want to take action on a what-if if that what-if isn't going to materialize. So I think I'd rather have the six-month without hours of operation restriction, and then, once we go through the process, we'll have data to decide if hours of operation need to be controlled based on what we learn in the trial period.
I kind of agree with that because you all, I don't like legislating the marketplace. I mean, you want to let the marketplace see where it's going to fall and then what's going to be strong for that. And then we always, this is a six-month, if we find it problematic, we can cut it back and tailor it later.
Well, I'm not going to be here in six months, but I can tell you again, it's going to be a whole lot easier to add than it is to take away. And y'all are dismissing, you know, marketplace doesn't drive traffic congestion. Y'all are dismissing the impact this is going to have on traffic congestion on the beach. You're dismissing the impact that staff and especially the Police Department has made on the impact this is going to have on the overall, the overall intent of the beach and the family orientation of our beach, but we'll see what happens. Any other? Okay. Thank you. We'll have this on the agenda for Thursday night.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Mr. Schmitt.
Thank you. Matt Smith, City Attorney's Office. I just wanted to bring to the council's attention that the way that the Florida statute is written, it specifically says that, I believe it's 316.1936, which is the open alcohol statute, and they say that specifically does not apply to passengers that are on these pedal pubs. However, I did put in, what it doesn't say is that you can't have alcohol, it just says that that specific statute doesn't apply. So what I've done is I've put in that our section, we have, we have a similar ordinance at Section 6.31 of our code, so that's right in there, and that's in Section 25.02, Paragraph 5, and that's a paragraph that addresses the passengers. So it's, it's our opinion that you can restrict alcohol, but I just wanted to counsel, I'm sorry, I wanted to warn council that you might have people that come in that want to operate these pedal pubs and they say, well, wait a second, the Florida statute said that this doesn't apply, and they're two different things, so you might get some pushback from operators.
So, currently as drafted, we do not allow alcohol, and that's just to make sure that you're aware that we would not allow alcohol to be served or to be drunk on, but you may get people who absolutely want to do that. And if you chose to do that, you could. It would require us to change our city ordinance, however.
Mr. Hamilton.
So my, my understanding is, under state statute, these megacycles are governed the same as a limousine, basically? So, I mean, so you can have alcohol in a limousine, you know, in a, you know, chartered limousine, but you cannot...
Well, it, that's not the way it's put, but it, it's right there in the megacycle ordinance, it says, I'm sorry, the megacycle statute, it says, "Open container does not apply to passengers of megacycles." However, we've got our own local ordinance, which, which currently we are applying.
Okay. The analogy that you made is a good analogy.
Anything further on 3.1? Okay, we'll discuss further on Thursday. 4.1.
Declare surplus for the purpose of donation for development of affordable housing. Two parcels of real property located at 1002 LaSalle Street and 1011 LaSalle Street. Approve the real property donation agreement between the city and Habitat for Humanity of Pinellas County, Inc., and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same, together with all other instruments required to effect closing. Mr. Lane.
Thank you. Chuck Lane, Economic Development and Housing Department. These two properties are located in Clearwater's North Greenwood neighborhood, on LaSalle Street between North Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue. The city acquired both lots in lieu of collecting a debt on housing liens. The properties are both identified on the city's list of city-owned properties that may be available for affordable housing. Council approved that list in June earlier this year. Habitat for Humanity will build a single-family home on each lot. Each home will, of course, be homeowner-occupied. I'll take questions, please.
Any questions of staff on 4.1? Mr. Aubrey.
Yeah, looking at the maps, it seems to me that more than two houses could be built on, on those two lots. They just seem, they go from, at least the ones that I have marked, from street to street, LaSalle to Inman on one of them, and, let's see. Unless, and I'm looking at the, it seems like the, I can see houses on lots next door, but only two houses would go on each lot, I mean, one house on each one of these lots?
I think you're probably referring to the, the lot on the south side of the street. It's, it's a larger lot, but it's got a very narrow frontage. It'd be very difficult to get two homes on it. We'll, we'll evaluate it if we can, but...
There's no access on the south side.
Oh, I see, that's, it looks like a street, it's just a boundary that I'm looking at.
It does, yeah. Access is on the north of that lot.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, staff on 4.1? Mr. Hamilton.
This question kind of relates to this item and the next item, because the next item is a, same type of thing, but a different organization that's going to be building a home. What is the economic requirement of Habitat for Ownership versus the next item? I know the, the next item allows 120% of area median income. What is, what is Habitat's?
Habitat's, their own rule restricts them to 80% of area median income and below. So we're donating both, we're donating all the properties. Our charter allows donation for affordable housing, and that property to be built to 120% of area median income. Our merge doesn't have, and that's the next item.
Our Merge doesn't have, and that's the next item, doesn't have that requirement. So, they're going to build at a higher income level. And it's nice to get that diversity of income when we can.
Any other questions? This will be on our agenda Thursday night. 4.2.
Declare surplus for the purpose of donation for development of affordable housing. Real property located at 912 Nicholson Street. Approve the real property donation agreement between the city and Emerge Community Economic Development Corporation, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same, together with all other instruments required to effect closing. Mr. Lane, again.
This property is also in North Greenwood. It's west of the North Greenwood Recreation Center on Nicholson Street. This project will be with Emerge Community Economic Development Corporation, and as mentioned earlier, they'll build a home for sale to a homeowner that is at or below 120% of area median income. And I'll take questions.
Any questions on 4.2? On our agenda Thursday, so we'll see y'all then on that one. 4.3.
Approve the City of Clearwater's Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
I have a brief PowerPoint. I'm going to present the Housing Division's Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Acronym, of course, is the CAPR. So, on December 31st of each year, the city is required to submit the CAPR to HUD, which is the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The report outlines the city's programs and activities and provides an accounting of all activities undertaken by the city and its subrecipient partners. And this, of course, is a report of the federal expenditures, Community Development Block Rent Funding, and Home Investment Partnership Program. The report also briefly summarizes the activities accomplished with funding from the State Housing Initiatives Partnership Program and the Pinellas County Housing Trust Fund. By including the state and local expenditures in this report, it gives us the opportunity to present counsel with an overview of the accomplishments we've made in the Housing Division over the report year, which, of course, is 1819. The resources and expenditures for the federal program include entitlement from CDBG and home. Entitlement funds are formula-driven amounts that are provided directly from HUD to entitlement communities like Clearwater. The entitlement numbers have remained steady over the last years, the last several years. In 1819, we received nearly $741,000 in CDBG and $383,000 in home funding. We carried over nearly $1.4 million in prior-year funds. This number also includes funds remaining from prior-year projects that were either canceled or withdrawn by the applicant during the course of the year. We received approximately $131,000 in program income, and that's primarily generated from home program activities through loans made to homeowners, nonprofit agencies, and developers. We also have a revolving loan fund that we can use for housing and economic development activities. The city expended approximately $1.4 million of these available funds, leaving a balance of just over $2.4 million. Most of the fund balance is home money. We are working on some multifamily projects that will use up a large chunk of this balance over the next year or two. Aside from the federal funds, the city also expended over $930,000 in State Housing Initiative Partnership Program funds and the Pinellas County Housing Trust Fund. As we've done for the last several years, we also provided a total of $235,000 in general funds to partner agencies to help us carry out our homeless initiative. When we use home funds on a housing project, we're required to provide a 25% non-federal match. We use ship and county trust fund money for this match. In 1819, our match requirement was $178,000. I'd also like to note that we can build a banked match from our partners' activities. For example, the cash equivalent of volunteer hours put towards a home construction project can be used as a future home match. All the funds we put towards housing are intended to leverage private funds. Our expenditures with the federal funds alone leverage nearly $770,000 in private investment. Our community development and housing programs are all about providing assistance to people and to families. This slide gives you an idea as to where we're getting the most bang for our buck. Our partnerships with public service providers certainly cast the largest net. In next fiscal year, we'll be trying to expand our economic development program, and with a few multifamily projects currently in the planning stages, I think you'll see an increase in the number of households served in the coming years. And this slide shows you the number of people and households we assisted through the state and local funds. As you all know, we consider the number of people we serve without partnerships. These are our public service partners. They play a vital role in assisting and carrying out the programs, providing services to our community. RCS Pinellas provides a wide range of services in Clearwater. Homeless Emergency Project, also known as Homeless Empowerment Program, has been a valued city partner for many years. Matty Williams Neighborhood Family Center serves a range of needs to Clearwater residents. West Carolina Gulf Coast provides substance abuse services. Gulf Coast Legal Services represents tenants facing fair housing issues. Pinellas Opportunity Council's Chore Services Program primarily helps elderly people no longer able to care for their own home. And Intercultural Advocacy Institute, also known as the Hispanic Outreach Center, provides youth programs and intensive family support. Many of these, many of these service providers have become staples in our community. We fund homebuyer education at $70 per person, per class. Clearwater Neighborhood Housing Services and Tampa Bay Community Development Services have been providing these services in Clearwater for several years. Housing and Education Alliance joined us this year as well, and we, 153 Clearwater residents went through this, went through this program and completed it in 1819. These are our partners with our microenterprise and public facilities programs. Tampa Bay Black Business Investment Corporation and Prospera provide technical assistance to business owners and hopeful entrepreneurs. We use CDBG to fund a facility improvement at Our Club on Whitney Road. We funded an HVAC replacement at St. Vincent de Paul Community Kitchen and Resource Center. They're making some strong progress with their job training program. And we began a solar installation project, which was completed in the current fiscal year for the arc of Tampa Bay. And I have some pictures of projects we funded with Directions for Living and HEP. This is at Directions for Living's main facility on Belcher Road in Clearwater. They transformed what was an underutilized storage area, and they turned it into a conference room and training center. It's a great addition that they use really every day. And HEP did a great job rehabilitating Beatty Villas. Beatty Villas is a permanent supporting housing facility, housing 16 units. Our housing partners, Southport Financial Services developed Woodlawn Trail, they leased it up earlier this year, just in the last couple of months. An 80-unit project in our Lake Bellevue neighborhood. Madison Point, another 80-unit senior project, over 55, just recently leased up. Community Services Foundation leased up seven units in the Lake Bellevue neighborhood, a project known as Team and Village. This is a housing project where they provide low-cost housing to non-traditional households, primarily getting unsheltered people housed. So, they began this effort less than a year ago, and they've been successful in housing 19 unsheltered, previously unsheltered people. So, here are two homes that Habitat for Humanity constructed on North Garden Avenue. This is just up the road from the 12-unit project completed in the previous year. And we have some projects that have begun and will be completed in the next year or so. Five single-family homes are either under construction or awaiting construction. All are with Habitat for Humanity. In addition, with my two previous items this morning, staff has recommended the transfer of three vacant lots for the construction of three new homes in North Greenwood. We have four home, we have four rehabilitation, home rehabilitation projects in process right now. And we're also in the planning stages on some exciting multifamily rental projects. A project with HEP and the school board is expected to create 40 new rental units. Staff is going to repost an RFP for the transfer of city property for a small housing project with MLK. And we're working closely with the CRA to bring mixed-income housing to two vacant tracks in the CRA. 2.25 acres on Cleveland Street in the downtown gateway, and three and a half acres in the 200 block of South MLK in the downtown. And council recently approved a sale for property for an 81-unit project at the former site of Fire Station 45, and we'll know in March whether that application was successful. So, on December 10th, I presented the CAPR to the Neighborhood and Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. They passed a motion unanimously recommending council approval of the CAPR. HUD requires a 15-day public comment period prior to submitting the CAPR. We're in that period right now. December 19th is the last day of that comment period. So, anyone wishing to review the document, it's available at myclearwater.com/affordablehousing, and a hard copy is available for viewing at the Housing Division office at 600 Cleveland Street on the sixth floor. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions to staff on agenda item 4.3? Mr. Lane, clarify for us why we are able to fund an organization that isn't based in the Clearwater City Limits.
Because they serve folks that are within Clearwater, and we confirm that. And that's why. And there's a couple of organizations that we do.
Yeah. The one that came to mind was the Our Club on Whitney Road, because I know that's not in the Clearwater City Limits.
Yes, sir. We have to, we have to confirm that they, that their clients live within the city.
Okay. And then, help me understand why we would provide funding for the upgrade of a facility for Directions for a living that doesn't really deal in housing per se?
Well, our CDBG funds are much more flexible and go well beyond housing. And the lion's share of the CDBG money we use is put towards community development. And a lot of that is homeless services, it's chore services, it's Gulf Coast legal. These are, a lot of these are not really housing-related services that we, that we're able to provide.
Any other questions on 4.3? So, we'll have this on our agenda Thursday night.
Sure.
5.1.
Authorize the negotiated sale of not to exceed $25 million in water and sewer revenue refunding bonds, Series 2020, and adopt the appropriate resolution on first reading. Mr. Baraker.
I'm Baraker, Finance Department. This item, good morning, Mayor and Council. This item is to authorize the negotiated sale to Raymond James and Associates of not to exceed $25 million of water and sewer revenue refunding bonds for the purpose of refunding the 2014 bonds. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to staff on 5.1? We'll have it on each other Thursday then. Thanks.
Thank you.
5.2.
Award a contract for gas utility rate studies and other professional services for the five-year period ending December 31, 2024, to Raftellus Financial Consultants, Inc., for a not-to-exceed amount of $184,000, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Ravens.
Good morning, Mayor and Council members. Jay Ravens, Finance Director. This item is requesting council approval of an agreement for rate study consultant services for the gas utility for the next five years in the not-to-exceed amount of The last gas rate study was completed in 2014, and council policy requires a rate study at least every five years. RFP 58-19 was issued, and we received three responses. Raftellus Financial Consultants was selected by the selection committee. Raftellus has valuable experience performing similar rate studies for other municipal gas utilities. The five-year agreement includes plans for up to three rate studies. The not-to-exceed request includes $27,500 of contingency for optional rate study meetings as well as hourly consulting over the five-year period if needed.
Any questions on 5.2? Consent? Thanks. 5.3.
Approve settlement of automobile bodily injury liability claim, 18-00162, for a payment of $95,000, inclusive of attorney fees and costs for Zoe Applegate, with a general release of all claims, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Hall.
Mayor, members of council, Dick Hall, City Attorney's Office. Under this item, we're seeking authority to settle a claim arising from auto accident involving a claimant in which her vehicle was struck by a city vehicle. We're asking to finally resolve all their claims by the payment of $95,000.
Any questions of staff on 5.3? Mr. Hall, clarify again, this did not take place within the Clearwater City Limits, correct?
My understanding, yes, sir.
So, the police had exceeded, I mean, gone beyond our, is someone from the police department here that can talk about that, or?
They may not know about the claim, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
They may not know about the claim, Mayor.
Okay. All right. So, we don't know what action has been taken to make sure that, you know, our policies are being followed?
My understanding that the people involved were suspended.
Okay. Consent?
Yes.
5.4.
Authorize a sole source award for a renewal subscription to the ISO Claim Search for Non-Injurors Database, effective January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2020, for a not-to-exceed total of $15,000, for the annual membership fee and, as needed, claim search fees pursuant to Clearwater Code of Order, this is section 2.5641B, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Osorio.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Good morning, everyone. Rick Osorio, Risk Manager. The Risk Management Division would like to renew its current agreement approved by City Council in 2019 and continue its participation as a member of the ISO Claim Search Database for Casualty and Claims Inquiry. This database is shared by most insurance companies, third-party administrators, and municipalities in the industry who administer claims. It is a single-source provider of this service. Its reputation and quality of product are well-known in the industry. This web-based search and report tool is particularly effective in identifying professional claimants. There is an increase from $7.90 to $8.50 for single-field searches, and $13.10 to $13.90 for name-address searches, along with an annual membership fee of $1,100. We're requesting approval of a not-to-exceed amount of $15,000 to cover our searches for the year and the annual membership fee of $1,100. This agreement does include an auto-renew provision with a 90-day cancellation clause. The Risk Management Division is respectfully requesting renewal of this agreement as a useful tool in claims management. Any questions?
Questions on 5.4? Mr. Kundo.
Yes, sir.
We've had an arrangement with them the past year or two years?
Since 2017, I'm sure. Yes.
That's what I thought. And you've been, you've been happy with the services that they've been providing?
Yes. Yes, they provide history of injuries of people who have filed claims against the city, and it's an effective tool in finding out if they've had previous injuries, if they've had previous settlements, disabilities, when their attorneys filed demands against the city. Then what we do is we contact the previous entities who've settled with them, find out what injuries they had, which may be the same that we're managing, and use that as part of our negotiations. It's a very, very effective tool, so.
And two differences are, one, the rate increases to 815 or 850?
To 850. I'm sorry.
Five-zero.
Yes.
And then, an auto-renew.
Yes. Yes. Yes, sir.
Any other questions of staff on 5.4? Consent?
Yes. Thank you.
6.1.
Approve a facility encroachment agreement with CSX Transportation, Inc., for the installation of an underground natural gas main in the CSX right-of-way, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Langill.
Good morning, Brian Langill, Assistant Director for Clearwater Gas System. This is a crossing agreement with CSX along State Road 52. They are, the state is doing a road widening project on that road right now, so we need to relocate our gas line, so therefore, we need to enter into a new agreement with them for this crossing. The legal has reviewed all the provisions of the agreement, and it's consistent with prior agreements that we've entered into with CSX.
Any questions on 6.1? Consent?
Yes.
6.2.
Accept a natural gas easement over, under, across, and through a portion of property conveyed by NNP Bexley LLC, whose principal address is 777 South Harbor Island Boulevard, Tampa, Florida. Given in consideration of receipt of $1 and the benefits to be derived therefrom, and adopt the appropriate resolution. Mr. Langill, again.
This is along Tower Road in Pasco County. It's north of State Road 54. This has three segments to it, the easement, that are in the diagram that are attached to the agenda item. This is to allow us to extend our gas line along Tower Road to serve the Del Webb subdivision and ultimately, future subdivisions downstream. and ultimately, future subdivisions downstream of there. This is an item that we've brought to you. Right now, we're providing CNG to that subdivision until we get these easements accepted and approved, and then we can run our line to that subdivision.
Questions on 6.2? Consent? 6.3.
Accept a natural gas easement over, under, across, and through a portion of property conveyed by Brian Craig Bexley, successor trustee of the Bexley Ranch Land Trust, whose principal address is Post Office Box 10, Sumterville, Florida. Given in consideration a receipt of $1 and the benefits to be derived therefrom, and adopt the appropriate resolution on first reading.
This is the same pathway here, just another segment, essentially the fourth segment. It's on a different easement because it's a different company entity that's approving the easement.
Questions? So, that's why we're going to have to do this one with the resolution, since it's a different?
Well, we now do resolutions for easement acceptance per legal department.
Yes, sir. Oh, 6.2 isn't on consent. Is the same for 6.1? No, 6.1 is consent. Okay, 6.2 is taken off consent because it's not supposed to go on. Okay. 6.3, we're finished then? 7.1, thanks.
Approve cosponsorship and waiver of requested city fees and service charges for fiscal year 2019-2020 for a new event sponsored by Clearwater High School titled Unity Walk in the amount of $3,330, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Chris Cook, Special Events Manager, Parks and Recreation. We received a request from the Clearwater High School Civil Rights Ambassadors about this event. They're bringing together high school students from around the county to do a memorial walk, as well as an event at Coachman Park. One additional change, since this was made, we worked with the Police Department and the organizers, and there's going to be some cost reduction on the police side, as we're actually going to start the walk at the marina on Clearwater Beach, and then walk over the trail to get to Coachman Park to help eliminate road closures and additional cost. But that'll take any other questions.
Any questions of staff on 7.1? Traditionally, this would have gone under the Special Events Budget that we approve once a year earlier in the year, right? So, this is?
Yes, but the kids hadn't, they hadn't approached the school leadership with wanting to do this.
Yeah.
They did invite me to a meeting and indicated that they would like to do the Unity Walk, which is kind of symbolic of the Pettus Bridge March from Selma to Montgomery. The number originally was 500 students. It was going to involve all the high schools. It still will involve all the high schools, but now the number's up to 700. It has generated quite a bit of support within the school district for participation. So, originally, they were going to walk from Station Square Park to Coachman, but because of the symbolism of the bridge, that's why they requested that we involve the Memorial Causeway Bridge in some way. And that's why you have the change.
Okay. Is this going to be an annual event then?
I don't believe it's going to be.
Okay.
They did not indicate that it would be.
Okay.
Their civil rights programs that they do is annual, but there was no indication. The youngest person who was on the Pettus March is going to be a part of the observance. She is going to participate. But I don't, yeah, I'm not thinking, I'm not anticipating this is going to be.
Okay. So, this is a one-time exception. If they want to do it again next year, though, will they know that they need to push it in our regular process?
Yeah, that's right, Mayor. What we try to do is if we do get an out-of-cycle, we then insist that if they want to continue this, then it's got to be applied for during the normal cycle.
Because I don't want us to get into, you know, where we have lots of these coming up throughout the course of the year. But the students' situation, we always need to encourage our students to participate and get involved in government.
Principal Masturides did indicate to me on Thursday, when I was attending the committee selection for the renovation, that the students would like to speak to the item when item was presented. So, right now, it's scheduled to be consent.
Okay.
So, we would not put it on consent, then they could at least thank us and make some...
Okay, so, we're not going to put it on consent, or you want us to put it on consent and the come will pull it?
Well, it's my understanding they are coming.
Okay. So, we'll just, we'll just keep this off as consent. Okay.
And again, that was a late request, too.
Yeah, okay.
I guess, a question. Is this kind of a, and I'm in support of it, is this also kind of a joint between the city and the school board? I mean, I'm assuming that the school district is supplying the buses that'll get the kids over to the beach and drop them off and everything else, which is an expense we're not incurring, they are, so.
So, this is kind of how it worked. The students at Clearwater High School came up with this idea. They went to the principal. The principal said, "I think it's a great idea." They went to the school district. They got all of the appropriate coordination approved. You're absolutely right. The school district is going to provide busing, you know, all those kinds of things. All we're doing is providing the site.
So, it's kind of a partnership?
They wanted to do it here in Clearwater.
Partnership between the city and the school board, too, the school district?
Right.
The funding that's being requested from Parks and Recreation is to waive fees, as well as to provide some production equipment, so that it's, let's say, a well-produced event.
No problem at all.
Okay. All right, well, we'll see them on Thursday night.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Mayor.
7.2.
Authorize a purchase order to Angelo's Recycled Materials of St. Petersburg, Florida for debris disposal, that's yard trash, class 3, and construction and demolition debris, in the not-to-exceed amount of $275,000 for the period of December 1, 2019 through September 30, 2021, with one additional two-year renewal term at an annual not-to-exceed amount of $150,000 at the city's discretion pursuant to Clearwater Code of Ordinance, Section 2.5641D, cooperative contracts, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. DeWitt.
Good morning, Brian DeWitt, Parks Senior Manager. This is our contract to allow us to dispose of debris, including tree limbs that we've trimmed, trees, and other various items that help facilitate our different teams under my section in the Parks Division. Do you have any questions?
Any questions of staff on 7.2? Mr. Albritt.
Typically, Angelo's is more expensive than the county. Why are we doing this with Angelo's?
Part of the reason is the location. The county is a lot longer of a track. As far as the specific financial questions, I can have our purchasing staff come up to answer, you know, more specific questions as far as the dollar amounts go, but certainly the location of it compared to the dump is critical when you add in the cost of vehicles, fuel, and man-hours that we lose in having that extra trip time.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
You're welcome.
This doesn't include debris from storm. This is just the, you know...
Correct, sir. This is our own operating budget, not debris from hurricanes or other items like that.
Let me also do a follow-up on Mr. Albritt's question, because he said that they're typically more expensive, and yet, in the write-up that's provided here, it says that Angelo's Recycled was the lowest bidder, so...
Let me ask Kelly from purchasing to come up to address the financial questions. Kelly?
I mean, they could, they could still be the lowest bidder, but yet, their normal prices could be more. I mean, that's why...
Good morning. My name is Lori Vogel. I'm the interim procurement manager. To touch base on this, sorry, this is my first council meeting. To touch base on this, the city of Largo came to us and the city of Dunedin to put this cooperative bid together. And so, we gave them our numbers, solid wasted, and therefore, when they put out the bid, the respondents, Angelo was the lowest respondent to that cooperative bid.
Okay.
I know.
Lowest, they closest. Volume discount.
7.2 on consent?
Sure.
Great. See, we won't see you back now on Thursday night.
No, you'll see her back.
On Thursday night? On Thursday night? Not on this.
Oh, I thought you meant this.
No, 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 I meant on this. 7.3.
Authorize award of invitation to bid 03-20, landscaping maintenance services to Botanical Dimensions, Dean's Environmental, Earth Designs, GAMCO Properties, Triple M Property Maintenance, and Valley Crest Landscape for a nine-month not-to-exceed amount of $500,000 for the period of January 1, 2020 through September 30, 2020, with the option of two one-year term extensions, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. DeWitt.
Thank you, sir. This is our landscape maintenance contract. You may or may not know that our internal staff currently maintain 109 properties throughout the city. There is an additional 700-plus sites and growing throughout the city, which includes medians, roundabouts, parcels that you may deem in the best interest of the city to purchase. All of those properties, the new fire station property on Hercules, for example, as those properties come on, it's our responsibility to make sure that they're maintained, and this is the contract that we use to help facilitate that.
Any questions of staff on 7.3? Mr. DeWitt, clarify, because, you know, one of the complaints that we hear all the time, and we've had people come even before council, you know, saying, you know, "Oh, look at this park, you know, they didn't do a good job in maintaining it," and more often than not, it's not our employees, it's one of these contractor employees.
Correct. We do try to ensure the same quality of service through our contractors as we do with our own staff, but I think the reality is correct, and obviously, we have a much higher degree of control over our own staff than we do the contractors.
Okay. But again, clarify that these contracts are going to cover 700 additional properties?
Correct.
If we were to do it ourselves, we would need more employees, possibly?
Absolutely.
And it would become more costly for us to do that?
Correct.
Okay. So, how, when we have an incident that comes to your attention or our attention, that the property isn't being maintained in, or needs more care, what do we do? Does the contract allow us to go back to the contractor and say, "Hey, you need to go back," or?
Yeah, we actually have numerous options. I have four staff members that oversee these contracts, to include a manager, a supervisor, and two employees. So, what we do in a situation like that is we go out and we put our eyes on it. More often than not, oftentimes, the quality complaints that come in are actually easily deferred, if you will, by the cut schedule. Every property is listed a certain cut schedule. So, let me give you a perfect example. Most of us cut our yards during the summer, for example, once a week. Well, we have properties that have been deemed, because of their level of use, to have a every-two-weeks cut schedule, for example. So, when somebody goes by and sees the property and sees the grass is taller than perhaps the way they take care of their own house, it causes concern. So, it's not that the contractor didn't do their job, it's just that's the level that's been determined of the cut schedule for that particular property.
Thanks.
Mayor, I would like to point out, though, that parking rec does put contractors on notice if they have not performed up to the agreements.
Absolutely.
And so, we're very, very focused on that because of what you just asked.
Well, and the reason I ask is because we hear all the time, "Oh, well, you know, this isn't done right," or this isn't, and, you know, people don't understand what you said, the different cut schedules and whatever. And I know, especially during this time of year, you know, we're going to say, "Well, you know, the Parks and Rec isn't doing its job," and actually, it is doing its job.
Yeah. But most of our contractors do good work, sir, but I can tell you, there's several that no longer work for us.
I'm sorry?
I said, I said, "Most of our contractors do great work," and I said, "But several no longer work for us."
Oh, no longer? Okay. I thought, I thought I heard something.
We do hold, we do hold our contractors and our staff accountable.
Very good. Consent?
Yes.
7.4.
Authorize award of request for proposal 31-19, Special Events Production Services to American Mobile Staging of Schaumburg, Illinois, and RCS Corporation of Clearwater, Florida, in the annual not-to-exceed amount of $100,000 with three one-year renewal options at the city's discretion, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Cook again.
Thank you, sir. Good morning again, Mayor and Council. Chris Cook, Events and Athletics Manager at Parks and Recreation. This RFP purchasing item allows us a little bit more flexibility than we've had in the past. The two, the two companies listed, RCS, as well as American Mobile Staging, specialize in different types of stages. Historically, we've used the big Jazz Holiday stage to kind of give everybody an example they've seen before. By allowing American Mobile Staging to come in, they have a lot of different size options that can be more cost-effective for us. There's two types of purchasing that we do. One is for city-produced events, which are like the Sea Blues Festival or Clearwater Celebrates America, where we add in additional staging. And then, there are some reimbursement events where we may get better pricing for them to do two events, like the Hispanic Heritage and the Jazz Holiday, and then the Jazz Holiday would reimburse us in order to save everybody a little bit of money. So, it's a purchasing and a reimbursement item. And again, the two vendors gives us flexibility to do what's most cost-effective and best-suited for those, for those specific events.
Question, Mr. Hamilton.
The American Mobile Staging is out of Schaumburg, Illinois. Do they have a local company they contract with?
They do. They have a fleet of stages in the Tampa Bay area.
I was going to say, because you bring a mobile stage down from Illinois, it can't be cheap, so...
Yeah, and I do want to point out, we do, you guys authorized us to purchase a new Showmaster last year for our city events, and for the times where it's available, we'll use that first and foremost. This allows us the opportunity to have another company to use if that, if the Showmaster's already used for something else.
I'm sorry, Mr. Pogly.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Cook, good morning. Is this, how many events, excuse me, is this involved? Is this about four, six, or is this our entire schedule? How many events does?
It's for the city purchasing. It's three events, and right now, for next year's schedule, it would be three reimbursement events as well.
And we don't anticipate having to use this service once imagine Clearwater's completed, correct?
Correct. This helps provide us the ability to go out and bring stages in until the new stage is built.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Have we used these companies before?
We have not used these companies before, but other local areas and municipalities have.
Okay. Is this something that Elite Fun, Elite Events had done in the past, or is that a different?
It's a different company. We, the last RFP that went out was Audio Services Plus was the name of that company, and they provided a stage, all the audio and lighting as one. This is just focusing on the stages to give us that flexibility.
Consent? 8.1.
Approve a professional services agreement and design work order with Wanamaker Jensen Architects, Inc., of St. Petersburg, Florida, for the design of Fire Station 46 in the amount of $734,109, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Chief Allen.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Scott Eller, Fire Chiefs, Clearwater Fire Rescue. This agenda item before you is a request to approve an agreement with Wanamaker Jensen Architects, Inc., for the design of Fire Station 46 in the North Beach area in the amount of $734,109. Fire Station 46 was built in 1964, and then it was renovated in the early 1980s to its current configuration. Over the last several years, we have looked at our options to either refurbish the current station or rebuild a new one at a new location or the current site, since the station has exceeded its useful life and does not meet the best practices anymore. Refurbishing the current station due to the 50% rule would not provide enough to redo the station and bring it up to where we need it. The current location does, however, meet our response needs, as well as is well-known by all communities of North Beach. The complexity of that location and the various FEMA flood guidelines and county requirements make this project extremely difficult, and the need for us to look outside for, out-of-the-box thinking. We completed an RQ several months ago to find an architect that fulfilled that need. Wanamaker Jensen Architects was the ones that we chose to meet that need. The design is to relocate the station to the center of the park, as seen, while the current station continues to serve the public in its actual spot. The design is for a two-and-a-half-bay station, one-story, meeting the flood level requirements by elevating the base level. Once the new station is complete, then the old station will be demolished and made back into parkland. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on agenda item 8.1? Mr. Hamilton.
Yeah, chief, the, you say a one-story, but it will be, I mean, to have the dormitory area and everything else, isn't it actually two levels inside? But the bays, I mean, the bays are basically two stories high anyways for the trucks and everything, right?
Well, they'll build the, by county code, it's got to be on pilings.
Right.
So, what... So what looks like underneath is still yet to be determined. It may just be filled back in, it may be utilized for something else, but it'll be a one-floor station, so the apparatus floor and the dormitory, the kitchen, TV room will all be on the same, the same level.
Not going to have a fire pole?
No, sir.
I didn't think you could build a fire station without a fire pole. So, okay.
I mean, just give me your checkbook, okay? We'll do it.
Don't we have some stations without fire poles?
We have many stations.
Yeah, yeah. Put it up for effect, you know? Well, the key, chief, as you were explaining to us, was that if we were to do a two-story building, we would lose some of the effectiveness that that station has built in its legacy.
Yes, sir, correct. This station is unlike any other fire station that I've ever even seen in the nation, and that is because of the interaction it has with its community. Not only the community of North Beach and the residents up there, and the community of the businesses along Mandalay, but the thousands of visitors that come every year that walk through that station. You can't, you can't be there more than half an hour, and somebody will walk up saying, hey, do you mind if I take a picture with the fire truck? Do you mind if we trade patches or T-shirts? It's phenomenal to see. And as soon as I take that and move the firefighters upstairs or to a multi-level station, I've lost that. I have lost all that interaction with the public and the community, and so that's why we really wanted to look at outside-of-the-box thinking, and they, Wanamaker Johnson was able to do that in this. Now, again, this is just preliminary, this is what this is all about, is try and build upon that.
And explain the construction schedule in terms of the relocate, because the, the station is now moving to the center part of the park, you know, how, do we have an idea how long construction's going to take and what's going to happen after that is completed?
Yeah, not yet. The, so as we proceed through it, we actually have two identical paths going on on the station. One of them is to work through Forward Pinellas to rezone that area that we're going to be looking at for the fire station. That's about an eighth month, eight-month project, and as Wanamaker Jensen approve, if approved, proceeds with it, it's the building, the design of the architectural components of it. Hopefully, the two will meet on the backside at about a nine-month component, and then we'll be able to start building. Average right now, stations are, you know, anywhere about, about a year to 18 months to build out. So again, it's about two or three years down the road to get final, and then, once this is built, again, this current station that they're in, and we won't have a lack of service there, we'll tear that down and then rebuild that area as park.
Consent? 8.2.
Approve the request from Edgewater Valor Capital LLC applicant to vacate a portion of a five-foot platted utility easement as recorded in Plot Book 31, page 12 of the Public Records of Pinellas County, Florida, and a portion of a 10-foot-wide platted alley as recorded in Plot Book 4, page 56 of the Public Records of Pinellas County, Florida, and pass the appropriate ordinance on first reading. Mr. Berzak.
Good morning, Robert Berzak, real estate coordinator. The applicant has requested that the city vacate a portion of a five-foot-wide platted utility easement and a portion of a 10-foot-wide platted alley on applicant's property to allow development of an 80-unit condominium complex. As a condition of the proposed vacations, the applicant will grant a 10-foot-wide utility easement to the city. All public and private utilities shall be relocated by the property owner at its own expense without interrupting service to the approval and acceptance of the utility owners. City stakeholders have reviewed the vacation request and the proposed location of the new utility easement being granted by the property owner and have no objection.
Questions on 8.2? Mr. Hamilton?
Historically, on this site specifically, this, this easement vacation was approved previously for a, for a previous development. The development did not take place, and therefore, the vacation reverted back. So this is basically the same thing that's already been approved years ago, but now it's being approved for a different, for current day.
Correct, and it would be the same thing if the development didn't take place, then it wouldn't go back, and it would remain the same.
Any other questions? Was that development the same size as the one that's being planned now?
I'm unsure about that.
Okay. And what happens if we don't approve this vacation?
Then the development won't take place.
Does he not have any other alternatives?
The easements and the alley go right through the middle of their development, so how they constructed it, it couldn't occur unless they vacate these.
Okay. Could y'all find out for us, you know, what was planned there initially when this was granted previously?
Yes.
Okay. We'll have this on our agenda on Thursday night. 8.3.
Approve a proposal from Precision Sidewalk Safety Corporation of Ocala, Florida, for sidewalk grinding in the amount of $250,000 in accordance with Clearwater Code of Ordinances, Section 2.564-1D, other government entities bids, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Delvo.
Good morning, Mr. Horn, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Bennett Almo. I'm with the Traffic Engineering Department. This renewal of contract is to have Precision Sidewalk Safety continue removing trip hazards from raised sidewalk panels identified by Parks and Recreation Department. Precision Sidewalk Safety Corporation uses a special process of cutting the trip hazards as opposed to grinding. Precision Sidewalk's method over conventional demolition and replacement is a significant cost to the city of Clearwater. We've used them in the past with great success. With that, I can answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of staff on 8.3? Remind us, because again, there are a lot of people out walking, you know, in Clearwater this time of year, and in the next several months, and we keep hearing, oh, I tripped, or I'm about to trip, or take pictures of sidewalks that, you know, aren't necessarily even, and say, oh, look, the city isn't doing a good job. Would you tell us what we have to do when they notice a sidewalk like that, you know?
Yes, they could either contact us through our public communications website, or they could contact Engineering Department and through me, and I could have that looked at by either our Parks and Recreation Department, Streets and Sidewalks Division, or I could have Precision Sidewalks go out there and assess it and eliminate the trip hazard.
Mr. Horn, we don't have staff that goes out and walks the sidewalks, you know? I mean, again, that would be cost prohibitive, right?
Well, I mean, I will say, I won't say we don't have staff out there, you know, observing what's out there, but as a matter of practice, right, we don't, we don't have them out there.
But if they do notice something, then they bring it to the appropriate, and we depend on the citizens to bring possible hazards to our attention also.
Right, and one of, and one of the challenges we have is that if you do bring it to our attention, then we have a window that we have to address it.
Okay. Very good. Consent on 8.3? I'm sorry, Ms. Albritt.
Yeah, this is in the Grove Wood subdivision, is it?
We finished the Grove Wood subdivision. As far as the removal and replacement of sidewalks through there, we have another contractor that deals with that, but as far as the trip hazards that are between quarter of inch high to an inch and a half, I have Precision Sidewalks go in there and cut it. But Precision Sidewalks hasn't gone through the Grove Wood subdivision, only the contractor that went in there.
Okay, all right, so, but a lot of these were caused by trees that were in the right of ways, that maybe as they grew higher, the roots pushed the sidewalks up?
That is mostly correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Pogly.
Thank you, Mayor. It seems to me, Mr. Horn, that, one, since we don't have staff that actually are out there, you know, walking all the sidewalks, but we do have employees that are out there every day, for instance, the meter readers, and they walk sidewalks throughout the entire city, as I, as I think I'm aware of. Do they report? Do we ever get information from them if they?
When we have employees that are out, they always report.
Right, I was just wondering if that's a normal practice?
But I don't know whether there, we have a specific program where the meter readers report. I don't know if you want to talk about it.
Terracotta Engineering Director, we do have a methodology of how we address neighborhoods. First off, you know, we follow our five-year resurfacing, so we go in and resurface, then we'll come in and look at grinding and removal and replacement of damaged sidewalks. So that's kind of how it all works out, so that's why it's done in different phases. We work really closely with the Streets and Sidewalks Division of Parks and Rec and maintain a list of complaints from residents. So with, with all of that staff and coordination, that's kind of how we come up with our major list of prioritizing sidewalk replacement projects.
Schedule, and then anybody who sees something is welcome.
Right, right.
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
That, you know, I hate to come back with the second round of questioning, but it turned on a light. When we annex properties, do we check the street and the sidewalk and let the neighbors know that, hey, you know, your property's being annexed, but we're not coming in to repave your street immediately, or we're not going to be able to fix something, you know, immediately? Because I've noticed some traffic on the internet, council, I don't know whether y'all have, of people complaining that they've just been annexed into the city within the last year, and their street is in bad shape, and Clearwater hasn't done anything about it.
Correct. We, we have a five-year plan, and some, and we get calls, and sometimes we have to say, I'm sorry, you're not scheduled to be resurfaced for seven years out, sometimes it's even 10 years. So we do our best based on a combination of, of the assessments we do, both structural and aesthetics, on the different neighborhoods, the volume that that neighborhood may have. So obviously, like a dead-in-cul-de-sack may have a lower priority because it serves very few people, and the traffic volume is so low. So we look at all different types of reasonings on how we prioritize our projects, and we try to avoid shuffling things around because it is more complicated than it appears. We work with public utilities and gas and stormwater to go in and identify the infrastructure before we go in and do a resurfacing project. We want to avoid resurfacing, and then a year later, coming in and doing a big, you know, sewer main replacement project. So all of those factors help determine our long-range schedule for resurfacing, and hence, sidewalk and curb.
And that's explained to somebody who's being annexed into the city?
We do, specific to your question, we do have those conversations, because there are times when the new, the new property that are annexed in, they, they are expecting, as a benefit of annexed in, you know, to get a higher level of service than they were receiving from the county, and we do have to integrate them in, and we do have those conversations. Most of them are fine with it, some of them are not, and it is what it is. We do our best.
But again, for our citizens to understand, there is a, a schedule that we have, you know, to really take a look at the entire city and, and stay on top of these things. Right. Consent on agenda item 8.3? Thanks, apologize for that diversion there.
Done.
8.4.
Approve request for qualifications RFQ 52-19 Agreement with Construction Manager at Risk, Skanska USA Building, Inc., of Tampa, Florida, and Preconstruction Proposal in the amount of $425,000 for Imagine Clearwater, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Kurtz.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council members. I'm Tim Kurtz, Construction, Engineering, Construction Manager. I'm here to present RFQ 52-19 Agreement for Construction Manager at Risk to Skanska USA Building Incorporated of Tampa, Florida, and their proposal for preconstruction phase services in the amount of $425,000. Excuse me. Once approved, Skanska will begin working directly with the city, our consultant teams to do design review, construction cost estimating, value engineering, project scheduling, phasing, and assisting in efforts to begin construction activities. I have representatives here from Skanska USA's Tampa's office to answer any questions you may have, and I also have representatives from Stan Tech team here to answer any questions that may fall under their preview.
Questions on 8.4? The briefings that we've been getting, I think, have been very helpful, appreciate that. Do you want to do this on consent, council? Consent then? Agenda item 9.1.
Authorize award of invitation to bid 01-20 Code Inspection and Plan Review Services to Quorum Services of Tampa, Florida, Joe Payne, Inc., of Tampa, Florida, and Nova Engineering and Environmental LLC of Tampa, Florida, for an annual not-to-exceed amount of $500,000 effective January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2020, with the option for two one-year extensions, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. I'm Kevin Garrett with Planning and Development. This item will provide us with funds.
Excuse me, Mr. Garrett, if that doesn't light up, you can't continue.
Hang on.
Okay. You may, you may continue.
Okay. This will provide funds for our as-needed contract inspectors and planes review. We went out for bids, we got bids from five companies, we're asking for these three to be approved.
Any questions on 9.1? Consent?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. 9.2.
Approve amendments to the Community Development Code to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code with certain local amendments in Section 3-1502 in place of Chapter 47, Article 7, Unsafe Buildings and Systems, and Chapter 49, Housing Code, and expanding the powers of the Building Flood Board of Adjustment and Appeals to hear violations and appeals related to the International Property Maintenance Code, and pass the appropriate ordinance on first reading. Mrs. Root.
Good morning. My name is Dana Root. I'm the Assistant Building Official, I'm in the Planning and Development Department. The item before you is to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code, and this will take, this would be put in place of Chapter 47, Article 7, Unsafe Building Systems, and Chapter 49, Housing Code. Currently, we have two codes that we're using. One is the 1985 Unsafe Building Abatement Code, which it takes care of any unsafe structure. We also have the Housing Code, 1991 Housing Code, and that would address any housing issues as the minimum standard for a dwelling. What the city proposes is to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code with several local amendments. Second city, the city's proposed ordinance would expand the power of the Building Flood Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Under this new ordinance, the Flood Board would now have the power to enter orders requiring the repair of unsafe structures and to allow the city to enter the property to make repairs on the owner's behalf. Finally, the remaining amendments are technical in nature and would remove certain references of the Unsafe Building Abatement Code and the Standard Housing Code. A copy of this code would be at the city clerk's office, and this, this ordinance was approved by the Community Development Board on November 19 by all members. Any questions?
Any questions of staff on agenda item 9.2? Mr. Albritt.
So this basically gives more flexibility and teeth for the code enforcement of properties?
Well, it's not code, code enforcement, that's a different division. What this does, it takes the residential, which would be the housing, and the unsafe, which could be applied to residential, but it's only applied to commercial properties. This sort of, this combines the two codes. Back in 1998, the Southern Building Code Congress International, which, which wrote the Housing Code and the Unsafe Building Abatement Code, decided to publish a International Property Maintenance Code. So what they did back in 1998 was combine, combine the two.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Pogly.
Thank you, Mayor. Within this code, does it, does this, in effect, give us any more teeth or more tools to bring into compliance these commercial properties with a more expedited timeline? Does it have anything to do with that, or is it just new sets of standards consolidated?
Within the code, there's no timeline set. Within the code, there's no timeline set that's up to the, the building official. In terms of teeth...
Well, for instance, if we have...
There's no, there's no major changes to the Housing Code and the Unsafe Building Abatement Code, which works very well now.
Okay.
In, in the, the International Property Maintenance Code.
Was it a more stringent set of standards then, by incorporating this international?
No, they pretty much, they pretty much took the 1990, 1985 Unsafe Building Abatement Code and the 1991 Housing Code and combined the two.
Just a consolidation. Okay, thank you.
Now, we have one, one document that we can use, and they do not publish either of the codes that we use now. You cannot find them on the internet.
I see.
We have paper copies at our office.
I see.
Mr. Kindle.
I don't like the name "international." Is this a national code? Why, why, why are we going under?
Well, to, to give you the, the history of the international codes. The International Code Council writes the international codes, and that would encompass building code, mechanical code, plumbing code, gas code, accessibility, existing building code, energy code. So what Florida does for their building code is they, they take the international code, make a few minor changes for Florida, and it's the Florida Building Code. To give you a history of the Florida Building Code, back in, I think Andrew was 98, after Andrew happened, Florida had four different building codes that, that you could use. And so, so every jurisdiction could, could pick and choose. So we have 24 jurisdictions in the county. So Florida decided that it needed one code. And with the international code, like I said, Florida takes the international code, which I believe about 35 states use, and most other states do what Florida do, does. They, they adopt the code, put their name on it, and make minor changes.
I don't hear anything international about it. So I, do I understand it's a code that's here in the United States, 35 states?
Correct.
This isn't some UN big brother coming in and telling us what to do?
No.
Okay.
The International Code Council is out of Alabama.
Mr. Hamilton.
I know this, this is just kind of a, another tool in the toolbox, is my... Because I, I still see implementation or, or action taken on this thing is, is going to be tricky, and I don't know who makes the decision, because I mean, you know, if we now have the city, the city now has the power to order or enter a, enter a property and do the, do the improvements ourselves and then put a lien on the property. Who's the determinant, who gets to determine where it's money well spent or it's not money well spent as far as, you know, bringing, you know, doing this work on, on the property?
I can answer that. Mr. Hamilton, Michael Ford, Assistant City Attorney. Right now, the city actually does have the power to do that. They bring those cases before the code board. In this case, you can still do that, or the city can bring it before the Flood Board. And the Flood Board, Flood Board is consisted of professionals who can, contractors and engineers. So they'll determine whether or not the structure is essentially unsafe enough, doesn't need the code or not. And if it doesn't need the code, then they can, which they already have the power to determine, they now have the power to say, either do it, or the city can go on and do, or do the work itself and demolish it. So they will be the arbitrator.
Demolish, demolish was the word I was kind of looking for, because sometimes it's cheaper to demolish and better to demolish than to try and repair and fix, you know. Money into a bad building is still a bad building, so.
I, I do not believe the city has ever repaired a building. We've demolished buildings.
I want to follow up on, on, I think, a point that Mr. Pogles was trying to get to, and that was, i-if a building is vacant for an extended period of time and nothing is being done to it, if it's not safe, this code doesn't apply. Is that correct?
If it's not safe?
If, if it's considered safe, this has no...
Correct.
Okay, so we can't go in and force a property owner to improve his building or, or lease it or, or sell it based on this code?
Correct.
Okay.
If I could just clarify, Gina Clayton, Planning and Development, we do have an abandoned building code in, in the Community Development Code. It's separate from these amendments, but we already have that authority.
Okay.
If it's unsafe, we can't tear it down, but if it's ugly, we can make them paint it, find it, do all that stuff. But we can't make them tear it down.
We can't make them tear it down.
As long as it's safe, yeah.
Okay.
If it's a public nuisance, then yes.
Difference. Mr. Horn.
Mayor, I want to go back to Councilmember Albrecht's question, because I think he was going down the track of enforcement, and that's why he mentioned code enforcement. Who enforces this code on our staff?
It would be the building official.
All right. So, so Councilmember Albrecht, you were trying to, you were thinking code enforcement, but actually...
Building.
It's building.
Very good.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure.
All right, this will be on our agenda Thursday night.
Thank you.
10.1.
Authorize the piggyback of Florida State Contract as indicated software value-added reseller services to CW, CDWG of Vernon Hills, LA, in the amount of $460,581 pursuant to Claroata Code of Ordinance Section 2.5641D. Exceptions to be of the government entities bids and authorize lease purchase under the city's master lease purchase agreement or internal financing via an interfund loan from the Capital Improvement Fund, which I was deemed to be in the city's best interest, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, Council, Dan Mayor, IT Director. Commvault is our vendor for backup solutions. It is a combined software-hardware solution that writes our data off of our network onto devices that we can store at remote locations or at other locations within the city. We've been using Commvault for about the past eight years. The upgrade with this is both in terms of the number and the volume of data that we need to back up, because we've had significant growth over the last 10 years, as well as the, the hardware devices are a, a large improvement over spinning disk, they're solid-state storage devices. And this differs from the storage that I brought to you about six, nine months ago. That storage is for operational exchange, so we don't buy computers with hard drives anymore. We buy processors. We have network storage, right? And that's how it works. And then when we back it up, we back it up off the network storage to these devices. And we put them at locations where people with nefarious intent can't find them, hopefully, or get to them. It's encrypted as well.
Mr. Pogles.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, so this is, in light of what just happened at Pensacola, I believe I heard this weekend, all of this storage and backup is sort of insurance, reassurance that should we have cyber attack, we have backup systems in place and storage of our operational software tech systems that can recover?
Yes.
Okay, that's...
Backup has always been part of what you do.
Right.
Computers are wonderful things, they leverage productivity, but they have their weaknesses and flaws. It's always to sometimes recover documents for any reason.
Right.
Publicity recently has obviously been about terrible situations with ill intent, and yes, this contributes to our backup for that.
So a follow-up to that question would be good. We have systems and protocol in place. And then we also have insurance, reinsurance, if we have to pay somebody to let us go, basically, if they, we have insurance for that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Albert.
I think he answered my question.
Okay. Or he asked your question. Any other consent?
Yep.
11.1.
Approve the inter-local agreement between Pinellas County and the cities of Clearwater, Dunedin, Gulfport, Largo, Osmar, Pinellas Park, Safety Harbor, St. Petersburg, and Tarpon Springs for funding the Tampa Bay Estuary Program match of a Florida Department of Environmental Protection grant to develop a social marketing campaign focused on reducing sanitary sewer overflows and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Porter.
Good morning, David Porter, Public Utilities Director. As you're well aware, we've been combating issues within the sewer system for some time, trying to deal with sanitary sewer overflows. It's one of our major projects that we've been working on. One of the issues that we deal with, with sanitary sewer overflows is those that are caused by the homeowners themselves. It can be problems with their laterals from their home to the sewer, sanitary sewer. It can be things they put down in the drain, like grease, fats, and oils, and things like that. It can be roots from trees on their property. So there's a number of things that contribute to sanitary sewer overflows. As you also know, we're a member of the Wastewater/Stormwater Partnership, which is a group of all of the utilities here in Pinellas County. One of the tactics that we came up with to try to deal with those components of sanitary sewer overflow risk caused by homeowners and can, and can be alleviated if homeowners were better educated on these issues, is a marketing campaign. So we contacted the Estuary Program some time ago, about a year ago, and asked if they would be interested in working with us to develop a program in conjunction with DEP, who provides 50% of the funding, to do just that. So we're in the process now, we've got a grant, or the Estuary Program has a grant from DEP, there's a $75,000 match, and now all of the communities in the Stormwater/Wastewater Partnership are getting together to come up with that matching funds. So I gave you a long story, but that's what I'm coming here for today, like you to approve the city putting its share of those funds.
Questions on 11.1? Mr. Pogles.
It's a great marketing campaign. Hopefully, this will motivate and encourage folks who are not annexed into the city yet to do so and get rid of those septic tanks. I mean, that's one of the, that's one of our expected, hopeful, objective outcomes, right?
For those folks where we've already provided the sanitary sewer.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Kindle.
I was just wondering what our fair share is.
It's 10,000, just tell you in a second.
$247,000.
There you go, 10,200, whatever.
$47,000, all right.
Money well spent.
Which is...
Mr. Albert.
Which is a lot less because of the program than what the actual cost would be.
Oh, absolutely. This is a $150,000 campaign.
Right.
So we're going to get equal benefit.
It's a great deal.
It is. Thank you.
It has listed here, the, the total cost is $77,000. The county's putting up $22,000, the city 10, Dunedin 3, Gulfport $292, Largo $8,000, Osmar $2,000, Pinellas Park $5,000. It must be based on population.
It is.
Yeah, and St. Petersburg is putting up $19,000. And speaking of St. Petersburg, they recently passed an ordinance pertaining to laterals.
Correct.
And is that something that we ought to be looking at, or are we looking at to do a similar type ordinance here, which I think...
I'm sorry, sir, go ahead. We are. And again, the Stormwater/Wastewater Partnership, we've been working for almost a year and a half, along with all of the legal folks from each of our cities, to try to come up with an ordinance that'll work for all of us. The intent for us is to have the county take the lead and write the ordinance with the rest of us being able to adopt it, so that we're equally sharing the load. So, we're not there yet, because there will be some prohibitions on things that we do right now in order to make that work.
Well, but, but that's not what, St. Petersburg passed its own, so you're saying...
You're correct. Now, St. Petersburg went ahead and did a pilot program on their own, and they've written an ordinance on their own. And there's a reason for that. They had the problems with the DEP that we haven't had. So we're not in that position where we were ordered to do so and to try to find, make that a key element of their way of dealing with the issue with the DEP. We don't want to get there, so we're trying to come up with a partnership, having an ordinance that will be equally applied across the entire county, with potentially the exception of St. Petersburg. They have their own.
So where, where are we with the county ordinance?
Well, we've been working on it for about a year and a half. It's quite a tricky thing to accomplish. There are a number of issues that we're dealing with. Perhaps in the, within the next year, I hope, that we'll have something ready to go. So we're working on it, sir.
Okay. Consent on 11.1?
Yep.
11.2.
Authorize the award of invitation to bid 12-20 liquid aluminum sulfate, Thatcher Chemical of Florida, Inc., in an annual not-to-exceed amount of $235,000 with the option for two one-year extensions at the city's discretion and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Porter again.
Again, David Porter, Public Utilities Director. One of the chemicals that we use in our processes in our wastewater treatment plant is liquid aluminum sulfate. Aluminum sulfate is used to help precipitate out phosphorus, and phosphorus, as you know, is one of those nutrients that we do not want to put into the bay or to the, the waterways here in Florida. So this chemical is used to reduce phosphorus, and I asked your approval to purchase it.
Any questions on 11.2? Consent?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Council 12.1 through 12.7 are second readings. Any questions on our second reading? They will all be, all on our agenda Thursday night. Before we go on to 13.1, why don't we take our recess and reconvene at 10:55? I'd like to reconvene the work session for December the 16th and remind everybody our meeting will be on Thursday, December the 19th at 6 o'clock. Agenda item 13.1, Mr. Delk.
Yes, Mayor/Council, Michael Delk, Assistant City Manager. Wanted to talk to you a little bit this morning about the results of our public engagement meetings, and then have a conversation with you about the amphitheater and the operations and how we're going to manage that facility. We need to get some kind of direction from you. One of the things I'll say is that I think, you know, we're moving very quickly towards some construction. Next year is going to be a really important year for us. I think it's going to be a lot of fun. I'm getting increasingly excited the closer we get to the ability to turn some dirt out here, and I wanted to, you know, emphasize that our feedback from the public has been really positive. So, we're not going to give you all the details of that today, given that it was a public outreach and public engagement. We're going to continue to assemble some of the feedback and the information that we have gleaned from our four meetings, and we'll provide that to you on Thursday night at a point where we can have some interaction with the public if they choose to come in or weigh in. So, the first thing, well, let me first of all go through kind of our agenda, what we're going to try to cover today. I'm going to give you a brief summary of the public engagement, and we'll follow up on that with more detail on Thursday night. But I want to talk to you more at length about, and I've got staff here to try to answer some questions. I've had a number of individual conversations with you all over the last several months, and as I, you know, kind of update you on our weekly progress and what we're doing with the park. And I think there are some differing kind of views of how we may need to manage this. And so I think as we get very close, we're now really working on 60% drawings. We're trying to pull together the financing and operations of the park. I think, you know, it's important for us to understand what the, kind of what that scenario looks like for us, and some of that depends on the levels of use and how we manage that facility, including whether or not we, you know, how we manage a conservancy if we move in that route. So, we're going to talk about a series of those things. Some things will be some pretty easy questions for you, some basic assumptions and other things we may need to talk about a little bit more in depth, and we've got some staff here to help us, help us answer questions as we go through that. Then what we would do in January is probably bring back a more detailed financial model of what the operations, maintenance, expense annually of a large outdoor amphitheater, 4,000 covered seats, the back of house, what that looks like. So, and then we'll wrap up with a brief discussion on what the next step is for the bluff and the properties that we own there. So, very exciting, very exciting end of year, and looking forward to some activities occurring shortly after the first of the year, starting with the library. We, our public outreach, 400-plus attendees. Y'all are, most of you are aware, the Clearwater Main Library was an outstanding meeting. Countryside Library, a good group of folks there, although admittedly a smaller group, but we were still able to get some good feedback. December 7th, the Countryside Mall, that was an outstanding day. I think we all were very impressed with the people walking by. You know, frankly, that's something, you know, the next go-around or the next big project, I think we'd like to take more advantage of, is sitting up in the mall and really just capturing people as they walk by. I think, you know, with the virtual reality videos and the laptops, the ability to get some interaction and feedback right there at the mall area was very, very well-received. And then North Greenwood Recreation Center on December 10th, we had an outstanding turnout from the North Greenwood community. I don't know that I could have been much happier with the good response that we had there. We've got a, we'll have a meeting tonight, actually, at the Sailing Center, so this is a little more impromptu, haven't had quite as much notice as we've had for some of the others, but hopefully we'll get some good feedback there as well. And again, we'll summarize that for you on Thursday night. But let me hit some of the very highlights of what the survey responses are. These vary, the 2.4 out of 3, that's an 80% positive response mark, point on the amphitheater in green. The Civic Plaza itself, 2.3, that's a 76% positive response rate. The lake, 76%, Playground and Garden, 2.4, about 80% positive response. The Bluff Walk, 80% positive response. The library, 80%. Renaming the park to Coachman Commons, maybe not surprisingly, had the most question marks from the folks that we had talked to, but this rate of approval or acceptance of the renaming of Coachman Park still generates over six out-of-ten positive responses, or 63%. So, any rate, I think we've kind of got a good reality check from our community that overall the park is moving in a very positive direction, and so I feel pretty confident now as we move from 30% to 60%, and we take a look at some of those detailed comments and things that we've gotten from the public. And again, we'll talk a little bit more on that on Thursday. Maybe we can enhance some things that the public seems to be particularly enamored with and happy with, or make some adjustments and changes, and so we'll be working with StanTech down the line after we go over those things with you. So, I think what we want to focus on this morning is we kind of end out the year here on what I would consider to be a very important discussion with you. We have been indicating to you for some time that we would want to bring you something more detailed in terms of how the operation, maintenance, and management of this facility needs to occur. I think, again, in some of our conversations individually, as we, you know, update you weekly, we've gotten a fair amount of responses from you and comments from you on the amphitheater, what your expectations are, and I think some of those are a little bit varied. So, as we establish what the operational model is for this facility, I think it's important that we kind of have a common understanding of what it is that we're trying to achieve with the facility. So, some of these questions may be rather easy for you, some may require us a little more discussion. I've got some staff here to assist with some of the details or particulars of some of these questions that we have, but we're not going to settle all that question this morning. What we're going to do is to try to get from you what we believe to be a consistent picture, feedback of what your expectations are, and then we'll develop a more detailed financial model and operational model around that, and we'll need to bring it back to you. And I would hopefully desire to bring that to you in January. From a timing standpoint, I think we're in a pretty good shape. We're moving quickly towards construction. Designs of everything is moving forward. We want you to be in a position to have options and choices, and also to have a complete picture of what the impacts, financial and otherwise, are of the venue. This is really focused primarily, this next few minutes of discussion is focused on the venue itself, the amphitheater. So, and it's really related to the operations and maintenance of the amphitheater only, not the park. So, I want to, we'll just start off here and go through the amphitheater program list assumptions. And actually, I think I'd like for Chris, if you could come and maybe talk a little bit about that. But let me kind of walk you through some of these initial assumptions. Shows will not inhibit the use of the park outside of the green. I think that's important, is your expectation that for ticketed events, what goes on inside the ticketed event area will be managed and controlled by either us or the operator. Everything else that goes on outside the ticketed event area is going to be publicly accessible, just as it normally is during a working day. So, I think that's a very important consideration. That means the Bluff Walk, the plaza entry at Cleveland and, you know, the lake area, the garden area, you know, are you, is your expectation that the entire park outside the ticketed venue, event area, if that's the case, is open and available for use during the event? Shows will not negatively impact the redevelopment of adjacent parcels. I think, you know, that's a problem. I think we've all heard that question. And so this is a little bit of a, you know, you know, a situation where what are your expectations? What is your level of acceptance of impact, if you will, or not? Shows will not negatively impact adjacent residential structures. Obviously, that's something we've all heard. What is our tolerance for managing the facility? And we'll, why we need to talk about that will be a little more clear a little later on in terms of the next item, and the frequency of shows and event use of the facility. Will not restrict daily use or activation programming of the park. If we have a venue amphitheater doing events, that may or may not lend itself to a conservancy. A conservancy may be something we consider later on to have daily activation or routine activation of the park for other events and facilities. So, is there a conflict between what we may otherwise do on a daily basis to activate the park versus the incorporation or the compatibility of the amphitheater and that, how we want to balance those operations?
Hold on one second, Mr. Delk. If you can go back to that last week. I'm wondering, the first bullet and the last bullet, to me, are not necessarily in conflict, but my understanding and my impression, moving, you know, going back, is I want the park to be available while the staging or breakdown of an event is taking place. But while the actual event on the evening of the, on the evening of the event is taking place, I'm not sure how we, I'm not sure access to all the rest of the park, other than, you know, the amphitheater itself, is going to be controlled, other than to, you know, restrict access into the park for an event unless you, you know, to only ticketed people. I don't under, I'm not sure if there's a conflict there or not. I don't know if anybody else sees that or feels that.
I don't think there's a conflict. I'd like to see the park open at all times. The only thing that I thought was problematic was having people be, unpaid people being able to see the show standing on the bridge, not the big bridge, but the pedestrian bridge on, along the boardwalk or the...
Bluff Walk.
Bluff Walk. But I think that was taken care of with the trees and the, you know, you're going to be able to hear, I mean, people from the boats can hear concerts now than not pay. So, but to actually see it, you know, that would be in the green area, that would be the ticketed area. But I don't have a problem with the rest of the park being open during an event. Well, I think it's, you're clearly, we'll be able to hear it from any, all of these areas, but I think this question that is a good one, because we don't have perfect alignment on this expectation. So, that's exactly why we need to have this conversation. And frankly, I don't know what the reaction is of the other groups that are advocating to you, you know, the amphitheater in terms of their level of acceptance of additional park access. I mean, there could be a few thousand people up on, you know, the rounds, surrounding the park and the paid venue. It may not, may not matter, in which case, that's okay.
Let me inter, I'll let you ask, but let's clarify, is the park going to be open 24 hours a day, or they're going to have hours on the park, like our other parks?
I would assume we'd manage it like most other parks. Not much differently than we would now.
So, at certain hours, it would be closed? I mean...
I don't know. That's a, I mean, that's a management question. I'm not sure that we've answered yet in terms of that. I would expect that we may, we may anticipate a... I would expect that we may, we may anticipate broader times of use, because this is going to be a very, I think this park will be an attraction in and of itself. So we may have more interest here at wider range of time.
But the playground area, for example, may not be accessible at midnight.
Yeah, and if I may interject, Mayor, this is just a list of assumptions. And then the rest of the presentation is, I'm assuming will be to how we accomplish some of these assumptions and where there may or may not be conflicts. So we really haven't seen the details of, for instance, how do you have a ticketed event closed area and keep the rest of the park open? Because on my one-on-ones, the best seats in the house are the paid tickets inside. There's going to be a berm, a perimeter, shrubs, some kind of fencing. The whole idea of this major investment is to make it available 24/7, though, not literally, because I don't see this public investment of interest, of this park, as being accessible 24 hours. It's going to have to be protected, not only for the park's good, but for citizens' good. So I don't foresee it being 24/7. But I would like to just accept these assumptions and see the rest of the presentation, how they plan on accomplishing that.
Thanks, Mr. Poglice, because I was going to suggest that, why don't we, you know, write your questions down? Because otherwise, we will never get through the presentation.
All right. I'm going to ask Chris to talk about this a little bit, but I think one of the things that we've been internally discussing at length is the anticipated non-cost recoverable events assumptions. And so, Chris, want to kind of walk through this with us?
Yeah. Good morning again, Mayor Tuncs. Chris Kupchak, Recreation. So just kind of working through, there have been, as the excitement has built, there's been a lot of people in the community and outside of the community who have been asking questions about how they can start to get on a projected schedule of events for when the new, when the new park opens. So some of the things that we wanted to get some clarity on before that was some of our existing annual events, and how we're going to treat those, and how that could potentially impact those financial models that we were talking about building. So the city will continue to subsidize and co-sponsor certain events. We know that there's been a history of a lot of events that are very important to the community. On a yearly basis, we're currently co-sponsoring and host 23 events for a combined in-kind subsidy of $580,000. These events also count for 51 use days, which is those setup and breakdown days along with the event days. There is a mixture of ticketed and free events. Of those, there are seven, seven of those events currently have a ticketing component or a registration component. The vast majority of them are free and open to the public.
And I think, I would present these as, in a form of a question, in terms of your continued, because these are, these are obviously revenue or expense equations that we need to consider for the venue. I've heard some of you say that we, our desire is to recover the capital costs for the construction of the $14 million venue. If that's the case, then obviously, the number and extent of shows for which we are the primary contributors deducts from that revenue stream that we need to calculate to tell you what the annual supporting general revenue funding is going to be required to cover the venue. So I would, I would present these as a form of a question, that you anticipate continuing these. We would assume so, but we don't want to make that assumption without your...
I'd like to see the operator, if I may just spur it out. I'd like to see the operating agreement, or what the suggestions, the data is from, because we talked about multiple operators. It's going to be an open contract. I'd like to see what that formula, what that business plan may look like, to see if we're able to subsidize or take this away, and maybe in-kind doesn't equal this. You know, maybe we continue to do the seven events we do, but, and another thing, just to clarify, because the 51 days setup and breakdown, I think that's going to change. That's maybe not, to me, that's a little bit misleading, because the infrastructure's going to be there. The whole park is not going to be shut down for setup and breakdown days. Because that's, on the first slide, the assumptions are the park will always be accessible and available. So the setup and breakdown days, to me, are, it's already going to be there. That timeframe of lost days to the park, which is how that seems and sounds, is not really accurate. We're not losing that many days for setup and breakdown. They just, is that...
Well, I think we're, the impact of setup and breakdown is going to be substantially greater because of the number of events. And it may depend on whether or not, how much of a funding...
Just for the green, not the rest of the park.
The amphitheater, right. This is purely about covering the amphitheater.
To me, that slide maybe would have, at the end, let's see what the potential suggestion or business plan is using three different operators.
Using three different...
Well, we had talked about using, there's three different promoters, AEG, Ruth Ecker Hall, and Live Nation, an open contract. And when we had our discussion, yes, I believe the citizens should be able to recover the capital costs for this park. And there's several different ways to do that, by putting those fees on those operators, whether it's, sorry.
No, I would say, I think what we're focused on here is what is a more refined assumption, you know, related to setup and breakdown? Unless you all are saying that that's really the real number, or this is where we are today. Is this where we are today?
That is correct.
Okay. So...
For subsidized events.
For subsidized events. So I think, I think part of the goal is to go back and refine that, to make sure, as we move forward, that that's really what the number is, because it may not be. It could go up, or it could go down. I, you know, I don't know.
Well, I think the number of events will go up substantially, obviously, but it's important to know that we will, whether our expectation is that we will either try to recover costs from those in the future or not. Our assumption would be, for example, maybe with Clearwater Jazz Festival, we continue to be a primary sponsor and contributor to support that event, rather than assign the cost recovery to the jazz founder...
Yeah. And I would say that the thinking was, is that we would not be exclusive to any promoter. I mean, that was the, that was the principle behind it. It doesn't necessarily mean that we will actually agree on the deal with them. It just means that we are going, there will be no exclusive user.
Right.
Okay? I do think there's some more work we have to do to really talk about just how much we can expect to generate in terms of revenue to recover the cost of investment that we're making. I think that comes later. I mean, I think...
Well, it comes later. I think what we're trying to do is to establish some common understanding of the assumptions so that we can build a financial model as to what the impact is, or what the level of use has to be in order to make the venue self-dissustainable, if that's an objective of City Council.
Right. Yeah. That's the question we have to answer.
But, but I'm getting confused. We're talking about events that are currently on the park now, so that's 23 events?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
Okay. But you're asking us to make a determination on recovering that $580,000 from that, those 23 events now?
No, we're asking you to accept or not accept the premise that we will continue to provide in-kind services to a series of basic events, as we have recently historically done. That because we're building a $14 million venue, you're not going to expect that these, these will no longer be subsidized events by the city. That's what we're trying to clarify for you. What will we continue to subsidize? What do we look to recover costs from?
But we don't know what those 23 events are.
We do.
Well, I mean, we don't have a listing.
No, we don't. Yeah, right now.
Do you have the, did you bring the list with you?
I have a...
We have a spreadsheet that has the list.
We have, I mean, we have a spreadsheet list.
Yeah. I mean, that's where I'm sort of struggling, you know. If you're, I think we all would probably say, we don't want to cut away from those 23 events now, but maybe when you show us that list, we would say, hey, wait a minute, why are we providing, you know, funding for this event?
Community benefit revenue generators. These are, we want to continue to put our brand out there and support community events, which I'm certain a lot of those are. So we don't want to give that up. But when you start looking at the calendar and how many programming days, for-profit would be the open contract to the promoters, and then these are kind of community events. I mean, the Jazz Holiday, for instance, is a not-for-profit. So that's that community piece.
Just let's kind of briefly run through, it's because it's a fairly short list...
Yeah, because the calendar could change.
Things that we're currently doing.
Sure. You know, and these are in no particular order. So we have the MLK Parade and Rally, Clearwater Run Festival, and then Cruising at the Capitol, we included some of the events that we anticipate will have an impact overall on the park as, because with the enhanced park, we would anticipate that, you know, we would have some of the events may move into the gateway. So that one, Cruising at the Capitol, we could probably take that one out of there. So we'll go to ESPN Elite Invitational Welcome Event, Sea Blues, Wild Splash, Relay for Life, Look Up Clearwater, Easter Egg Hunt, 97X Backyard BBQ, Florida Orchestra in the Park, Clearwater Celebrates America, the Offshore Nationals, Hispanic Heritage Festival, Jazz Holiday. And then what's the final one there, Chris? Boat Parade? Because the other ones are primarily going to be not directly impacted on the venue.
Yeah, there's a, Blast Fridays, we would anticipate being part of the new venue. For those, of those that he listed, there's, it's really a couple, a handful of events that generate the, that larger number. Sea Blues, as he'd mentioned, we did the Florida Orchestra event in the park last year, which we subsidized. Clearwater Celebrates America, the Superboat components to the downtown events, the Clearwater Jazz Holiday, Hispanic Heritage Festival, and the, and Blast Fridays, as I mentioned. Those are the key ones that make up the large numbers. Some of the other ones are smaller fee waivers and things like that, but those events I listed are...
Yeah. See, I see some of those events, a lot of, a lot of those that were just stated, not as a direct impact to Coachman Park, but to downtown. So for instance, the Boat Parade, within this new Imagine Clearwater, the Boat Parade does not impact Coachman Park. It does because they currently go to Coachman Park at the end of the parade, but I don't know that they're going to be able to go to Coachman Commons anymore, if that's even going to be a staging area for Race Village. Maybe it's Seminole Boat Day, I don't know, because there's way too much very nice infrastructure there. I don't even know where we would begin to park 50 superboats on 50-foot trailers.
Well, what we'll, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
What I would, what I would say, this is important, and we can, and we don't need to go through this line by line and make so, we don't want to take that much of your time. We don't need to. But we, I think what's important to understand is that there's a certain level of contribution in the new facility. We're going to continue to do regardless of the capital costs, the capital recovery. We know we're just going to be contributing and partnering with a number of these events. So we'll, we'll continue with that basic assumption, and then that will help us. That's, that's really kind of all we need from you today. Just an understanding, common understanding of that, and then we'll focus on the, you know, the other, what we would consider to be the cost recovery side of the equation, where we want to recover capital costs.
Mr. Auburn.
Okay. So you've kind of answered what you want to hear today, I think you're going to get an answer for. We all kind of agree with that. But there's a lot more talk that has to be done on, like, I don't agree with the 50-something days of the park closure, or the green closure, to have 23 events. And I've said that since the beginning, talking with you in private sections, I think, sessions, I think that's too many days. If we're going to have a park that is made, where we're not going to have to enhance like we do now, we're not going to be closing that park three days for a one-day event. I think we're going to be able to tighten that up. And I know a lot of the events are not one-day events, they're two, three-day events. So we need to have more of a discussion on that when we get to that point. But I'm not going to hold it up today because of that. I'm just saying, at some point, we'll talk about, more about that, and how we're going to proceed with that.
Sorry?
Well, some, I think, as we kind of go through this list, I think some of these, these factors will, I think the event days, I mean, there's 4,000 seats. We can't have permanent seats in the park by virtue of the charter. So those will need to be set up and taken down, and so that's probably not really doable in one day necessarily, given the time that most events are concluding. So, you know, I think the question for us is, as we work our way through, what is the level of use? In other words, if the, if the financially sustainable level of use of the venue is upwards of 60 to 100-plus events a year, then those numbers change. So the question is, if we don't have a tolerance level for that, that number of events, then it just translates into the amount of capital costs that we continue to, you know, that we expend every year, every year in terms of the business model. So that's, that's the point we're trying to get to. You should not have surprises about that.
Correct. But also, we're not going to have, I want everybody to know that's watching this, that we're not going to have 100 Jazz Holidays, you know, a big, what I call a festival. They're going to be mostly smaller events, and they may not all be 4,000-seat events. They may be less than that. I know the Florida Orchestra wants to come play there, and I don't know if they'd fill 4,000 seats every time they come, but there'd be a lot of, and the nice thing about our Performance Pavilion, I call it, not an amphitheater, because we really don't have an amphitheater where there's thick seating. I mean, this, we have no seating, and the seats we set up have to be set up and taken down. So we can, we have a lot of flexibility to set up less seats on a smaller event, you know. I think that that's a discussion for another time, and I'm not going to belabor that now, so.
I think it's just impact. There will be days of impact, not necessarily closures like we have to do now, but there will be a setup impact.
Counsel, I do think we need to have a little bit more discussion with us providing a little bit more definitive information around this whole conversation that we just had, to make sure that your comfort level is where you want it to be. Because one, my concern, just from an operational point of view, is that to make this stuff work, we're going to have to do some things to make it work. And it may be inconsistent with what we all think is supposed to happen. We've got to get into the park, you know, we've got to make sure that, you know, certain operational things are set up appropriately. And I think that as long as we have a good idea of kind of what, you know, what is some of the outer range of things we can expect, you know, versus things that we, you know, desire. And, but I think having more conversation, at least I would feel more comfortable having more conversation with you about it, is what I think we need to work on.
And that's, that's exactly where we're heading.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I think I'm going to throw out a bombshell here in a moment, but I don't know whether I want to do it now or wait until after the presentation is completed. So why don't we finish the...
This is fairly short.
Yeah.
Build a venue that hosts national touring artists. I think there is 100% alignment on that fact. We will, we will build a venue that will attract artists, and our need to rent staging by the year will, will go away. We'll have the facility here. I don't think there's any question about that. But what I think is important is the next question, whether the venue can be all or substantially self-supporting.
All or substantially is, I think, a good assumption to start with.
Do we have...
I could take it, because you didn't mention timeframe. So let's, and Mr. Horn talked about impact. So we produce the...
All right, Mr. Poglice, let's, I don't want people just jumping in, okay? Mr. Poglice.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
So when you talked about impact, even if there's, let's say, a day associated, the city produces seven events. So we have chairs set up one day, chairs set up two days. So seven events, so that's, a level of impact would be, do we take a schedule of events of, let's say, we do 20 different events outside promoters, and our seven events, 27, and if you give them a day or two to set up and break down, that's 50-some events. So what would be the revenue, the source, the revenue generator of them doing 20 events? So having that kind of a business plan to see, because maybe we don't, we're obviously not going to recover capital costs entirely for quite a period of time. So what does that schedule look like? I mean, you know what I mean? How long does it take to do that? Is it years five through seven, and then seven through 12, before it's all totally paid for? And what's the acceptable level of impact to the citizens? So, I mean, that kind of schedule, those numbers would be helpful. those numbers would be helpful, too.
Well, I think, and this kind of leads us to one of the other, one of the other questions, and that is that there are certain, you know, along with the capital costs, there are operational costs. So, you know, I think, and we probably ought to talk about this a little bit, is I think in some cases, there's an expectation that this is a volunteer, more or less a volunteer facility. I think, you know, from the staff standpoint, is we believe that with a venue and operation of this size, that it may require, you know, an executive director, a facility manager, facility support staff. There will call windows, so we've got ticketing and that sort of thing. Bookkeeping operations, I think, you know, this is a, a substantial venue, and, you know, I believe it's our opinion that it may need a number of FTEs. And we've had this, this is not a new discussion. This is a discussion from, from April, and I think the estimate was in, what, seven to nine, or something along that line. That was based on maybe a little smaller venue, although I don't think the number of seats necessarily would impact that as much, whether it was 2,500 or 4,000. But clearly, for the back-of-house, those are, those are annual expenses of, you know, personnel to, to manage the venue. And it's a, it's a substantial venue. So, I don't know, Chris, do you want to talk about that from the standpoint of...
Mr. Kline, I think you had a question here a second.
I, I was just going to say that it's going to be almost impossible to be all self-supporting. That's a stretch of my imagination. I'm not quite ready to go there. It would be nice if it were, but we're blessed here in Clearwater with more parks than anywhere else probably per capita in the country. And do we have another park that's self-supporting? I don't think we do. And I think that may be too much to expect. I think we ought to have enough programming there in, in the performance venue, that we will recover some, at least the operating costs. And, and I think that would be a wonderful goal. And if, if we can earn more than that on our, on our events there, that's all the better.
And I think your question is, and your point is, that our, part of our concern is that it will, you know, if there's an expectation that it will recover, that that may not be where we need to be at this stage. It may not be appropriate to consider that it'll recover all the costs. So that's why I think, I think it's important for us to build you the model of, you know, the, the operations and maintenance.
We're, we're building something for 2,500, 50, 75 years. And, you know, we don't know what it's going to look like. I won't be around, but...
I mean, to go to Mr. Doug's comment regarding the staff, it's a chicken-and-egg scenario, because it's what, what drives the, the amount of staff that we have is the model that we use to manage the facility. If the facility is managed where it's a use fee, and we basically charge people that come in a particular fee, then that will, of course, our staff costs will be lower, because that eliminates the need for marketing, for someone to go over into in-depth contracts, things of that nature. Now, if we build the management structure off of how we currently operate, Mr. Cook can speak, speak to that, that's where we start seeing an increased level of need and basically autonomy for that staff there, because it's going to be a, they'll be center and mission-driven to operate that facility out there. So then that changes the dynamic and the dichotomy of how that's approached. So that, we'll try to work through that model, and that's kind of one of the things that we want to be able to present to you when we come back, is, okay, this with column A and column B and different scenarios. Now again, there may, the best use may be a hybrid use. And if that comes the case, then, you know, there's a lot of gray area that we're trying to navigate through to be able to present you the best modeling and scenario as we come forward. So that way, you'll have a full picture of the expenses that are going to be realized.
And so what I'll add to that is that, that's the beginning question, with what we anticipate continuing to sponsor and subsidize, with the total number of events that we see as being the appetite for that, with the number of dates we have left available, what does that model look like, and what's going to make the, the best sense for, for how to do that? And ultimately, I think our question is the use levels needed to achieve estimated gain-loss based on cost-recovery objectives, the number, size, and type of events. I think that's, and that's where I, I think our, the reason we feel compelled to have that conversation with you is, because if the anticipated result is cost recovery from a capital standpoint, then, you know, the number of event and use days is, is quite high by comparison. So to, to make those numbers work. And, you know, we're, we could be talking events, events, schedules in excess of 100 events a year. That may be, you know, that may or may not be within your tolerance level, your desired level of use, and that's okay. But it's just a matter then of, of what that model looks like from our standpoint in terms of budgeting. And, and again, that goes back to the fact that I believe we owe you an accounting for what that looks like. Because I don't think you've had benefit of that yet. And it, it can be, it can be substantial, you know, depending upon what our tolerance level is for use. Any, any comments on, on that in terms of your expectation?
Mr. Pogles.
Just a quick comment. So, again, it goes to impact. I mean, I think everybody in the community, nobody would be happy if the level of impact was up 150, 200 days on that park. So I think the appropriate question would be, how many years do we want to take to recover capital costs? Because then you can then reduce that impact through scheduling. Because we don't want, if you go back to the very first slide, assumptions and accessibility. So maybe we, we don't do 100 shows, we do 30 shows, but of course, the more you scale back, because there's going to be a lot of other community events, recovery time is going to take a lot longer. Maybe it's not 10 years, maybe it's 15 years. So we should have that information, that graph, what does that schedule look like? What is an acceptable percentage of recovery cost per show to the promoters? You know, what is happening out there in the market and the industry for those people? And then, like Mr. Halio said, is it, what does that business model look like? Are we in the management, or is the user agreement, user agreement, that, there's three different users agreement with those promoters? Maybe we manage until there's a, a conservancy. Maybe we just manage those, our seven concerts and those 20-plus community or additional community events. So we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot ahead of time by, say, we have to recover all the costs. We know it's going to be a, a partnership as we go forward. And I think the citizens with what they're going to get would be willing, and I think we should be agreeable to the fact that we're, we're making this investment, and it could take 20 years to recover all capital costs. So I, you know, I mean, we, but without having that information, we can't really know that.
Well, okay, so, Mayor, so, so then, let's, let's see if we can get a, kind of a, get some fundamental agreement on this issue. Question number one, is it your expectation that we recover our capital costs? That's a general question.
All right. But, but here's where I'm having difficulty with this conversation.
Okay.
We're talking about Coachman Park that has lots of aspects to it. The gateway, the playground area, the green area, and the estuary area, area, okay? Are you calling that capital cost? Or are you talking about capital cost, the cost of the amphitheater, the covered seating?
My understanding...
Venue, venue only is all we're talking about today.
Just the amphitheater.
Okay. And this is, this is where I'm having, you know, some problems, because we're, we should be talking about the whole park. And all we're doing is spending time focusing on getting this, this covered seating area. What if we don't do the covered seating right now? I mean, what's most important is that we get a back-of-house stage area that is finished and ready to use right away. We've, we've done it for how many years without having covered, a covered area? And let's see how much, let's get the park done. Let's get the whole park finished and get people excited about it. And then we can come back and visit, well, if we put this covered, you know, space over, how much more that will cost us? Because we already have a successful venue operating. We don't know, you know, a promoter's going to come in, he may sell 3,000 seats for one event, but for another event, he may be able to sell 10,000 seats. Are we able to provide 10,000 seats if the promoter needs that? I mean, I, I'm just sort of struggling, trying to work under this assumption that we're going to have a 4,000-seat covered amphitheater, when that's not really what we ought to be focusing on, in my opinion. We ought to be focusing on finishing the entire park. And then can we add to it a covered seating area two or three years down the road? How much extra would it cost us?
Well, just on the administration point of view, we, we are walking down the road now.
Yeah.
So, and our designers are trying to get answers, you know, related to how they can continue with their design. So if there is a desire, Mayor, for you all to change the policy direction in terms of how it's impacting this design bill that we're headed on, then you all need to have that.
But, but I, my question isn't to change it. My question is, can we phase it so that we can just concentrate on getting the, the back-of-stage done, getting the entire park done, and then come back and put the covered seating, you know, at, at a later date? What, what, what's the difference in the cost and the capital cost of the recovery?
Well, I think this whole, thank you, Mayor, this whole conversation is about recovering capital costs of this special event venue, the amphitheater and the covered seating all together, and how we manage it. What is the business plan going to look like? Well, and what is the timeframe of recovery? And what is the impact level based on how many shows, based on how much we want to recover? So it was a bigger conversation about the whole venue, not just the covered seating. I mean, we unanimously gave the direction of staff, and that's where they're going. So right now, I think we're talking about options for a business plan.
Well, we are. And I think that, what your point on the, the cost recovery percentage is very important. Here's the reality is that the, the number of events it takes to, to even approach breaking even with the venue may well exceed our tolerance level as a community. So what I don't want you to be as surprised, next year, or when these things come together, that you are spending more and more budget money to achieve less and less results. I, we, I feel like, you know, we have to have this discussion with you in terms of what your expectations are. And if the expectations are that we're going to continue to, you know, fund the amphitheaters, we would, you know, any large public capital investment like this, that's okay. You know, then the question just is, what is our level, comfort level as a community in terms of the number of events? But the numbers, you know, the, the, the discussed level of activity does not remotely match up at this point with the expressed intention of having some degree of financial cost recovery. And that, that has nothing to do with the balance of the park. And, and, you know, in the beginning, you all have said, we want to recover, you know, the financial benefit of the bluff and other activation scenarios in order to fund the cost of the park. So right now, I think on the, on the venue, and I'm frankly, am kind of separating the two things about the construction of the park versus the construction of the amphitheater venue. Apples and oranges, two different things. So what I'm trying to get to is, what is our level of expectation corporately on the sustainability of the venue, so that we can make a good, rational decision about how we sustain the rest of the park? So if it costs us, you know, a half million dollars a year to support the venue, that's, that's budgeted dollars that we don't have to contribute to the operation of the park. And how do we recover that or close the gap? And, you know, those numbers could well be that high or higher. So, and it depends on the amount of cost recovery, and then the period of time, as you suggested, over which we want to try to, to recover that. And so for us to go back and build an intelligent model for you this morning is about understanding your expectations.
And Mr. Pogles, let me, let me clarify. While we voted unanimously for a covered structure, I still, seeing these numbers and hearing these conversations that we've had with staff, you know, I'm beginning to think that maybe we ought to, and that's why I said, phase this in, to see that we get the success that we want, that we can build on, to see whether or not our recovery would, and activate the entire park before we go to something, you know, on, on the bigger scale. Mr. Albrecht?
I, I think I'd like to see, this is a good conversation here, and we need to have a lot more of this. And in January, sometime in January, we have a special work session on just this, where we can talk about, bring us more information that we can talk about and try to get a handle on this.
Well, and that, we will, we'll try to do that. I think even our discussion this morning has been helpful, to kind of, you know, and what I've got on the board right now is the risk, risk acceptance level. What level of income generating use can or should be assured here? Your, your primary partner advocating for the amphitheater, Ruth Eckert-Hall folks, I think they've expressed an interest to do 20 to 25 shows. The Live Nation folks have expressed a similar interest. The Florida Orchestra has suggested up to 12 events a year. But I don't know, maybe you all could tell me better than I would know, is what, you know, do they pay? Typically, there's usually some funding support to get the orchestra here. I don't, I certainly am not, I doubt that we could count on them to pay us for the venue. But that's, you know, I have not talked to the orchestra folks. So if with Live Nation and Ruth Eckert-Hall, you've got 50 events, we may well know fairly early on that that isn't remotely close to sustaining $14 million worth of capital investment in the venue. So what, what do we want to do above and beyond that in terms of establishing that level of use that provides us the, the, the revenue stream that we want and expect to get? Or do we, do we use some other areas of the equation to, to kind of balance it out through more limited use? Or, you know, you take a look at the extent of the facility, as the mayor suggested? You may have a number of alternatives. But we may need to talk ourselves through that. This is an important time to do that, when we're going 30 to 60%, because now we're, we're getting very close to having construction, which we will do, on the balance of the park. So, you know, that's, that's going to be happening soon.
And if I can add to what the, the mayor said, when you, you brought up the point of basically two options going forward, looking at the, you know, how do we phase it in later? And Tara Kivitt from Engineering is here to, to bring that up. But that also dictates our capital expense dollars, because the early kind of discussions that we've had is that that will be a significant additional cost, should we decide to phase in the covering later. I don't know, Tara, if you want to speak to that quickly.
Tara Kivitt, Engineering Director. Well, to be honest, it's too early. We don't have those figures yet. So we've brought SCANSCO on board. So over the next couple months, we'll work diligently on trying to figure out what that would cost, you know, if we're designing it, or if we would have to do the underground work for the canopy now, and then later decide not to build the canopy, you know, what kind of costs and impact it would do to the project to phase it the way we've discussed.
Mr. Hamilton?
Well, I guess my question is, how many more frames are there to the presentation? Because we've already gotten away from, let's get the presentation and then ask questions. So, but...
This is it, the last one.
That's the last one, okay. Because I'm coming at it from a little bit different direction. We're way past, as far as I'm concerned. We're committed. We're the pig at breakfast. You know, the chicken's involved, the pig's committed. We are, and we are, we're past the park. We're committed to doing the entire park, the playground area. we're past the park. We're committed to doing the entire park, the playground area, the lake area, and the performance venue, everything. It's all going to get done. We've established the bonding necessary for it. We haven't gotten into a lot of the things, but there's a lot of things that come later that we have no idea of yet, and we're kind of trying to base ourselves on information. I mean, I know for a fact, naming rights to this venue, there's a lot of companies out there that are now seeing a lot more value in having their name on a building or a venue of this nature than buying a newspaper ad, because people aren't reading the newspaper anymore. So I think there's, you know, we've got economic opportunities in this park that we're not ready to, we're not there yet. But they're out there, but it's not time to cultivating them. And, but, you know, I want the public to understand from my seat, I'm committed to this entire park. We're going to turn dirt, we're going to build the playground, we're going to build the lake, we're going to build the venue. The covered seating part, it's all part of the overall financing and the design that we've gone through. I have questions about the timing of what's getting built when, and, you know, what is the interruption going to be for, you know, Jazz Holiday? Are we not going to be able to have Jazz Holiday one year? Are we going to have to have Jazz Holiday maybe at Spectrum Field for one year while all this construction's going on because of the unavailability or, you know, the condition of the park itself under construction? These are all questions that'll get answered at the proper time, but I'm trying not to get hung up in the minutia of things we don't have control of right now. But we keep working on it, and we have to have continued meetings and presentations like this so that we can start to, start to build, you know, start putting the Legos together and get the final product to be what we want it to be.
Well, if I could make two comments, Mayor. One is that there's no question about construction of the park. We're moving quickly towards that. And again, that's kind of apples and oranges. The park, we're moving, we're going to construct and build the park, everything that the public has seen. I think the question here is really about what the full cost is of the venue and carrying the venue and how much you're willing to subsidize it year in and year out. And that's a pretty simple question. And so these assumptions that you're giving us are important, because there's, almost any way you look at this scenario right now, there's a substantial gap. And I, my belief is that we cannot leave you surprised about that. So we're not, we're not going to. So, but I think the, lost my train of thought there. I think that's, I don't want to, oh, I know what the other thing was. We're going to build a park. The park is not a question. The other thing is that Jazz Holiday will occur at Coachman Park next year, and we're going to work around that with Skanska and our team to make sure that Jazz Holiday is, remains consistent.
I think Mr. Hamilton summarized what all of us are thinking fairly well. But in terms of the maintaining the park, I think we need to have also a clarification as to what is going to, how many additional FTEs are you talking about to maintain the venue with the covered seating? And how many FTEs are you needing to maintain the park? Are you using those numbers for the entire park or just for the venue part?
Just the venue. The park is, frankly, the park is easy comparatively. It's more complicated to kind of work ourselves our way through the venue approach, which is why the focus this morning.
But I think, I think we ought to have those numbers so that we can understand, you know, what the park is going to be costing as well.
Well, there's a number of FTEs, and so with these, with your assumptions and kind of reinforcing those this morning, we're going to bring you back what that looks like, and we'll try to have it for you in January.
Mr. Horn?
Well, I'm just going to say, based on this conversation, you've given us a good idea of the kind of data that we need to come back to you with. And I'm committed to making sure that we're operating with the right assumptions. Case in point, Jazz Holiday, because we've gotten millions of questions about Jazz Holiday. Right now, as of the 16th of December, our intent is for Jazz Holiday to always occur annually. Now, what's going to impact that is our willingness to make sure we pay the cost associated with ensuring that that can happen. So that means that we're committed to coming back to you and telling you, okay, to keep the doors open for Jazz Holiday on an annual basis until everything is completed, this is what we're going to have to spend in order to make sure that we don't hamper construction efforts to achieve the goals, you know, I mean, you know, the contractor may have to stand down, you know, when he would otherwise be working. I mean, all those kinds of things that we owe it to you to know the consequences of that assumption that we're operating with, because right now, that's what we believe you all want us to do, is keep it open, right? Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Good?
I'm good, unless you all have any questions. I think we.
Okay. Well, Mr. Delk, again, on behalf of all of us, thanks for the community meetings that you've been presenting and the work that you've been doing on that. And as Mr. Hamilton said, the park will get done.
The community loves our park.
Huh?
They love our park.
Right. We just don't have that magic wand to get it done overnight. It may take, it may take some time, and we appreciate everybody's patience. Our meeting.
Mayor, I have one last topic to cover with you. That was the end of that discussion. I want to update you on the RFQ, the bluff process.
Yes, sir.
The economic analysis. This is very quick. What we've talked to our consultant about is a kind of a two-step process, RFQ qualifications, and then transitioning that to an RFP later on. I think in a nutshell, what we're going to do is to have all three of the, I know a number of you expressed interest that maybe one master developer, one person who might have an idea about all properties would have an advantages. So it probably does have some advantages and disadvantages. So the way we're going to approach that is having qualifications, really kind of broadly initiate our outreach pretty broadly. Somebody can get back to us with interest in either one property or all three properties. We'll continue to focus as a priority on the Harborview site, simply because our park construction and building around that is a, is a kind of a first-stage priority. The RFQ will be, it'll be flexible. It will express our priorities, such as Harborview, inquire the market perspective on each aspect, whether we should look at residential apartments or condominium or hotel overnight accommodations. We're going to have that be a pretty broad, broadly defined request. August as a referendum deadline is probably not realistic. I wanted to let you all know that. We can talk about that a little bit more if you want or later. We want to assess the market tolerance for lease or sale of these various properties. Condominium, really a lease is probably, land lease is probably out of the question, but for a lot of other uses and activities, land leases would be an alternative potentially. We want to assess possible partnerships that might come out of that request for qualifications, people taking a big view, for example, parking. Are there people interested in partnering with us with parking? We want to help to clarify further at a higher level our established redevelopment goals, opportunity descriptions, submission requirements, and evaluation criteria. So our consultant is working on that with us through this process. And then what we'll do is finalize those assumptions in January with you. So that's a little update on that RFP, RFQ process, but I think it maybe reflects a little more some of the comments that you all have made over the last few months about that broad look, even as we're trying to narrow a focus on some individual properties. The Harborview, again, we may need to participate. We may need to financially participate with that. Ultimately, our goal would be to not have to financially participate in the others. So we feel like, our consultant feels like this gives us the best chance to kind of find our way through that, and I think it's also pretty consistent with where you all have been over the last several months anyway. So.
Mr. Horn, did you have anything further for us?
No, Mayor. We're done.
One question, Michael, and that is your.
All right.
Just a quick question.
Mr. Pogles.
Thank you, Mayor. You said it was going to be ready by, hopefully by January. I understood there's going to be a, with this RFQ, there's going to be a big marketing piece that's going to go with it. Will we, when could the council expect to get that marketing piece? Because you're looking to us to bring in interest ahead of time, or if anybody's interested.
I mean, I hope right after the first of the year. I really want to have a big splash with our marketing. I want to, really want to get that out there broadly disseminated, try to throw as wide a net as possible. So.
Thank you.
And I want the benefit of looking at the RFQ, kind of going through this process during a period of time when we are actually in construction. That, I think, is, could really be to our benefit, which really, in all honesty, it makes me a little less concerned with a delay in the referendum part, because I think it gives us a better period of time when, to get this feedback.
Just a second. Did you have anything further for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel? If not, again, remind everybody that our meeting will be at 6 o'clock on Thursday, the 19th. Thank you very much.